Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting to order. I am not Mayor Busti, as you may be able to tell. I am Councilmember Jenna Carter, but am Acting Mayor because our current mayor does not feel as well today. So bear with me. You can laugh along with me as I mess up. It's inevitable. But with that, we'll get us started here. So we're gonna do the roll call?
Acting Mayor Carter.
President.
Councilmember Coulter.
Present.
Councilmember Lohman.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
Present.
All right. With that, I would like everybody to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, great. So next up on the agenda is approving our agenda for this evening. Do we have anybody that wants to make any amendments to the agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to see if we could move item 5.2 in front of 5.1, simply because we have a, you know, a public or a commenting period. In the, in the item 5.1 doesn't necessarily have one. So if we could move those two around?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember staff is fine doing that.
Okay. Are there any other changes, requests changed to the agenda? Okay. So with that, I would like to move to adopt tonight's agenda with the change of item 5.2 to make that the first item under our organizational business, followed by the HRA assessment, 2022 Legislative Session Review, and then the City Council Policy Issue Update.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion and a second to adopt tonight's agenda stated. With no further council discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Okay. So with that, we will move on to item 2 on our agenda. Am I saying that right? All right. So we have Ms. Jackson will be joining us for our mission moment. And we'll be, I have it on the agenda as introduction to racial equity action teams. I assume you're going to tell us more about what, what is about to happen.
Absolutely. Thank you, Acting Mayor Carter and Council. I'm really excited to be here tonight. About a year ago, it was right around this time, July 2021, I was introducing to you the newly formed Racial Equity Action Teams. And so I'm excited to be back here tonight for the second time. And we have a report on all the things that our racial equity teams have been doing. As you recall, these are staff-led teams that are tasked with operationalizing the racial equity work that we have in the city of Bloomington within their own departments. And so we have with us today our Community Development Racial Equity Action Team, Community Services REIT, and also our legal REIT to give their presentations. We'll start with Community Development, and we're just gonna continue in alphabetical order. And then we will have some time at the end for them all to join at the podium. And then you can have any questions that you may, you can ask any questions that you may have for them. And then later, on July 11, we'll have our remaining REITs here to present. And a few weeks after that, I'll be back in front of you. So you'll get to see a lot of me over the next few weeks with an overall update on the equity inclusion work that we're doing in the city of Bloomington. So without further ado, I will turn it over to Meredith, who will give the presentation for the Community Development Racial Equity Action Team.
Good evening, Councilmembers, Acting Mayor. My name is Meredith Fandoeg, and I'm here today on behalf of the CD REIT team. We're gonna be talking about some of our accomplishments from our 2021 work plan as well as some of the focused items that we have for our 2022-2023 work plan. Slide. Before I begin, it would be neglectful of me not to highlight the members of the Community Development Racial Equity Action Team. These are players that put in the work and effort above and beyond their daily responsibilities and duties of their career and job requirements. So none of this work would be possible without them. And I want to just make sure to take a moment to appreciate the time and efforts that they continue to put forth. So some of our top initiatives slide have continued to follow us through from our 2021 work plan into our 2022-2023, in part because, as many of us know, this work can't always happen overnight. So these are continuous top initiatives, but some of the subgroups and identifying different goals and challenges have changed. So we're gonna continue to work on city code and related policy reviews. Anybody who's worked with code knows that that is in-depth work and takes time and efforts from the community. So we're still working on that. Engagement with underrepresented businesses is still top of mind, as well as youth recruitment to work with the city, specifically Community Development, and including new research for assistance programs to help where we can within the Community Development Team. Slide. So some of the things that we've accomplished, before I delve into what we're working on now, I want to make sure we highlight the things that we've really tackled over the last almost two years of this team forming. We are continuing to grow and expand within Community Development and our CD REIT team, which is super exciting. It means our work is, is going forward, and we are excited to bring that passion to others that are joining our team. So some of the things that we've worked on and have completed, the repeal of the crime-free provisions from City Rental Code, as well as the family definition no longer being part of the rental housing code. Some of that was a direct response to working with Bloomington community members, hearing their requirements and making those changes accordingly, as well as working with our communications team to help form Bloomington Collective Stories of Solidarity. They have done a fabulous job highlighting some of our BIPOC members and done a wonderful job in making sure that those voices and stories are heard on all different platforms, including on YouTube. If you do one thing tonight and you walk away from this presentation, I ask you to look at those videos, because they're really amazing. We've had a lot of work done with our SAC, Small Business Deferral and Credit Policy that's been brought forth before you. It's a hard thing to tackle, but if you're a startup business and you're just starting out, to kind of have the challenges of facing additional costs where we can help defer and credit some of that makes a huge difference and helps bring down some of those barriers for first-time business and multi-generational businesses. We also have been one of only two departments to implement the pilot for the Racial Equity Impact Assessment. So we are working on that and live with that to bring that forward to you. I think we've used it in the housing, the rental housing code. Utilize that tool. We're utilizing it throughout anything that comes forward to you. There's successes there. There's also room for improvement. So we're providing that feedback where and when it's necessary. We had several of us join in completion of the U of M Business Retention and Expansion Program over the last year in hopes to help fuel additional knowledge as we go forward, some of our small business initiatives. Our community business survey results went live, and we have now secured some funding for the Small Business Resource Center. Slide. So now that I've kind of showed some of the things that we've accomplished here, some of the things that we're tackling, and we know these are not overnight changes, but we're gonna continue to work on them. City code review. This is information, we're kind of focusing on items that are staff-driven, things that we're hearing from the public as well as the business. And one of those is to continue that Pilot Department for the RIA tool. So it's been used to be brought forth to you guys, and we'll continue to do so. We hope to kind of hone in on where it's working and maybe where it's not working so that we can bring back that feedback for other departments that might start utilizing that tool. We're also gonna work at getting an equitable development analysis tool, something similar to a development scorecard. This just seems like a fluid progression from the RIA tool that we could utilize and a means of evaluating the development applications through an equity lens. Slide. We're gonna continue with our business engagement and services evaluations. So for those of us who have been listening and hearing more about the Small Business Resource Center, we've had over 250,000 confirmed in funding for this. This is really coming to fruition, and it's amazing. We still have 2.04 pending with potential funding to come. So the McKnight and the Art money, as well as looking at the former Fire Station 3 to be the actual brick and mortar location for this hopefully soon-to-be-realized dream. We've got the business displacement or anti-displacement policy. This team is working on looking at local municipalities similar to Bloomington that are encouraging displacement or anti-displacement policies. This helps with making sure that we can help prevent gentrification of small businesses and continue to make sure that we encourage BIPOC and small business growth in our Bloomington neighborhoods. We're working on a business startup assistance program research, modeling off of some of the HRA loan programs, a revolving loan fund research as well, which works on more specific and subcategory funds or matching plans that might be met with specific needs for the businesses, and then a facade improvement program research. Slide. And then we have our youth recruitment. So this is something that we're gonna continue to work as many other departments are working on having gaps in employment. We've got people that are leaving the field and retiring and moving on. There's a need to fill those positions, and we hope to fill those positions with passionate young youth and maybe local youth. So we're, expand our internship program currently with two new interns. We have Aaliyah Upshaw, who is from Kennedy High School, and Jennifer Augustine Ambrosio, who came to us through Capital Pathways Program. They're working with us this summer. We also are working on making those connections and partnerships with the Career Counselors at Kennedy High School, Valley View Middle School, and Avid Programs. We have full intention of participating in local employment fairs. A lot of these things were kind of put on hold with COVID, so we hope to have a physical presence in the next 2022-2023 year. And then we hope to have this partnership with Brooklyn Program, or at least learn from something that they have. So instead of recreating the wheel, for those of you who are maybe part of our Equity at the Center, a couple weeks back, we were able to hear Curtis O'Neil speak about the Brooklyn Program at Brooklyn Center and Brooklyn Park. And we think she's got something really fabulous going on there. So if there's a way that we can implement, encourage, and, you know, partner with her, we think that there's a huge future there for us. Slide. So that's a little bit of the work that we've got going on for our 2022-2023 work plan. And I'd be happy to take any questions at the end of this presentation from our REIT teams. Thank you for your time.
Hello, Acting Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Kelly Dewise, and I'm with the Community Services Racial Equity Action Team. Slide. So just an overview of the things we're gonna go over today. Our, our membership, our role, key highlights of the work that we've done over the last year to advance racial equity. Slide. I will, I should have paused a little bit. I just introduced ourselves and over the first slide. So if you want to introduce yourself.
I'm so sorry, you guys, for being just a little bit late. My name is Afaf, and I'm one of the public health nurses at the city. I've been with the city for about a year and a half. It's so nice to be here, and it's nice to be able to be here.
I'm sorry, could you speak into the mic a little bit?
Oh, I apologize.
And I'm not sure if that mic is even... Perfect. Thank you.
Sorry. Hi, my name is Afaf. I'm one of the public health nurses for the city of Bloomington. I've been here for about a year and a half, and it's nice to see all of you guys. And again, I apologize for being a little bit late. All right. Oh, and you want to introduce us? Perfect.
Oh, sorry, no, I did not do that.
Oh. All right.
Introduce myself.
All right. So going forward, so this is our roster of members on the Community Service REIT team. We represent the Communications, Community Outreach and Engagement, and Public Health Divisions. We have seven members total. The Administration Division is about 14% of our group. The Communications is about 14%. Community Outreach and Engagement, 29%, and Public Health is 43%.
Slide. So our role as the Racial Equity Action Team, we meet monthly and work to identify opportunities and increase staff awareness of our racial equity work throughout the department, since in Community Services, a large part of our work, our day-to-day routine work already is, has to do with racial equity. So we wanna, so our team has been highlighting those things that are already going on. We send out a monthly newsletter to our department to recognize how staff are advancing racial equity and highlight key events and opportunities, such as Black History Month celebrations, city proclamations, anti-racist trainings and resources and more. We also serve as a sounding board for racial equity-related workplace issues in the department. So we've had some, some of our department members have an issue or concern. They've come to us, and we've had discussions and worked to resolve those. We, the team also engages in conversation about current issues and how they might impact staff and community members. Recently, for example, we discuss, participated in a discussion to reflect on the war in Ukraine and how it may impact immigrant and refugee communities in Bloomington, specifically refugees from Afghanistan that might be, you know, triggered with how people are responding to one crisis and not the other.
Slide. So next, we will showcase some of the work that our staff in the Community Services have done to advance racial equity. Slide, please. Okay. So the city joined the Justice Coalition in June 2021. We partner with volunteer lawyers to help property owners with discriminatory covenants discharge the covenants from their properties. We also coordinate and educate and outreach, and outreach efforts in the community to build awareness about discrimination in housing. To date, we have received over 50 requests from residents for discharge assistance. To continue to build awareness, the city is hosting an event on August 9 at Bryant Park with food, speakers, activities for kids, and more. These efforts are led by the Subcommittee of Staff from Community Services in the Legal Department, the Human Rights Commission, and the Planning Committee. Slide.
Another project that's going on are the Pride celebrations. So in 2021, Bloomington had its first Pride celebration. They, we estimated that there'd be 500 attendees. Turns out, there were close to 2,000. So that is going on again this year in 2022. This year, entertainers and vendors will include more BIPOC individuals in the LGBTQ+ community. Our REIT team hosted a citywide opportunity for staff to view and discuss the art exhibit just down the hall, Come As You Are. And the goal for 2022 is to continue to ensure fun, safe, secure celebration. Slide.
So the Maternal Child Health Team also started implementing what's called the MESH Program this year, beginning in January. MESH stands for the Maternal Early Childhood Sustained Home Visiting Program. Home visits are completed during and after pregnancy. And what happens is nurses create a partnership with families to deliver services to enhance maternal and child outcomes. And an example of that would be promoting preventative care and safety to reduce emergency room visits and to make sure that child protective services involvement is lessened as well. I'm happy to say I'm part of that program, and as soon as I started, I was on that journey, and I'm absolutely loving it. I see how families react to this program, and it's been nothing but positivity so far. So, yeah. Next slide, please.
And the final thing we want to cover is how our department has been reducing racial disparities in vaccine coverage and other COVID-related disparities. So one of the things that our department has been doing is sending out a weekly newsletter to over 350 community leaders. We've gotten really positive feedback about that newsletter. It has information on COVID-19 vaccinations, community resources like financial assistance, food, all those sorts of things for community leaders to share with their community members. And that newsletter has gone out in multiple languages so that we can reach a wide community. Last winter, we, our department did a COVID listening session with BIPOC and other community leaders to hear their thoughts and what was going on. And then throughout this whole thing, we've also just continued to talk with community leaders about the situation and to provide help and assistance and getting feedback from them on, you know, things that they think we should be doing differently or, or start doing. And those are presentation, I think, questions at the end. So, okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So our next presentation is gonna come from our Legal Department. And I was all prepared to filibuster, just so we could give people time to make their way to the screen, but it looks like I may not have to do that. But since I'm standing here, I'll talk. And I just want to say one thing quickly here is that the Racial Equity Action Teams is sort of like framework for this work is something that's a part of the GEAR foundational training. And so GEAR advises government agencies to stand up teams to be able to help carry out the work. And so it's not something that's unique to Bloomington. But one of the things that I've encountered both in doing this work in other organizations and also just in having conversations with my colleagues is that typically the REITs start off with a lot of energy and excitement in their groups. People are volunteering to lead the work, and then they start to drizzle a bit. And so the challenge for my colleagues who will lead equity inclusion work across the country is how do we keep that energy sustained? And how do we make sure people are really excited about doing this work? One of the things that I'm really proud of in Bloomington is that our energy continues to increase. In fact, we've added more members to the REIT teams over the last year. In fact, I had a question from Bernadette today. She was like, how many people can we have on our team? And so I'm really excited about the presentation that's been given and the one that you'll see before and the others that you'll see in a few weeks. But I just wanted to take time to analyze these amazing people who are doing this work and also to analyze that we have a lot of people, both in the community and also in the organization, who are supportive of the city's decision to lead with an equity focus. So with that, I'll turn it over to Maureen and Jennifer, who will give the legal presentation.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Cross. I am one of the prosecutors with the Bloomington Legal Department. And Ms. O'Brien is here as well.
Hello.
And we are here to give you an update, just as everyone else did. As way of background, the members for the city's legal REIT include the city attorney, our deputy city attorney in the Criminal Division, myself. I'm the Assistant City Attorney in the Criminal Division. Ms. Maureen O'Brien is the Assistant City Attorney in the Civil Division. And we also have our Crime Victim Liaison as a member. So for our accomplishments for 2021 to 2022, we really focused on embedded equity and service and providing proactive connections to our community. We started a restorative court program. This is a dedicated court in Hennepin County for Bloomington criminal defendants. It was a lot of work to get this off the ground. Our hearings on this court calendar started June 1 of 2022. So we just began them this month. We are very excited to see where this goes. We'll provide a little more background about what that court is and what it does and what we hope to see. We also have expanded our partnership with the Justice Point Diversion Program. I believe that you have some handouts in front of you with regard to information about the services that Justice Point provides. Justice Point is a diversionary program that a defendant can choose to participate in in certain criminal cases. If they choose to resolve their case in this way, they will meet with the intake coordinator, who develops a plan specific for that person. There's no prescribed course for people generally, but we really have them focus on what brought that individual into the criminal justice system and what can we provide to prevent them coming back. They meet with that coordinator, develop that plan at the close of the year, assuming they have not been charged with any new criminal cases, and complete the program. Then their case is dismissed, and there's no plea. That's the current set of diversion that we work with, with Justice Point. It is only a $25 cost to the participants. This is a really important piece because the Justice Point program used to cost our participants a lot more money. This created a disparity of access. As you may guess, some of our criminal activity is based in economic circumstances. And so with a high-cost barrier, it filters out a lot of people who could really benefit from this diversion program. We have also worked on translating our documents that we use frequently into multiple languages. Our Criminal Crime Victim Liaison is tasked with sending out a letter to each and every victim of a crime prosecuted by the city of Bloomington. These, of course, were drafted initially in English, and we have worked on having them translated into Mandarin, Russian, Somali, Spanish, and Vietnamese. When they are able to be received by someone in their native language, it makes the court system more accessible and increases participation. As was previously mentioned, we have worked with the Justice's partnership. The HRA racial covenants have been discharged. The private racial covenants are being handled by Larkin. And the city is looking forward to potentially using an extern to assist us in discharging the racially, racial covenants on city-owned properties. And finally, Ms. O'Brien will be presenting to you in future, I believe, in conjunction with Finance about her work in the Equitable Contracting Microbusiness Development. So as I mentioned, our restorative court is a huge point of pride for our REIT. Its mission is to employ a holistic justice model, to restore individuals to good health, and promote law-abiding behavior. So in this court model, what happens is a person comes to court and is identified by their attorney as someone who may be a good candidate for this court. At that point, they are given a separate court date off of the regular criminal calendar and instead are referred into a calendar where there are social workers who staff that calendar, and there's minimal participation from the judge. The individual person is paired up with a social worker, who meets with them to determine what their needs are in areas like mental health, addiction, public assistance, healthcare, housing, and employment. They develop a plan with that social worker, and the social worker helps direct them and walk them through accessing these services. You have check-ins throughout the course of their case. The person comes back to that different court model. The social worker reports in on their progress. And after they've made significant progress in those areas that were identified as goals, the social worker will recommend that they graduate from the court system. In consideration of what that person has done with regard to all of these aspects of their lives, we will offer a significantly lighter sentence if that person is in fact sentenced or pleads guilty at all. We, like I said, we just started this calendar. We worked with the public defenders and the bench to get this up and running. Minneapolis also has a restorative court calendar and has noticed that they have had a statistically significant reduction in repeat crimes occurring from the individuals who participate in the restorative court program. And we are excited and look forward to seeing similar successes in the city of Bloomington. So let's look ahead to 2022 to 2023. It's really nice to be able to tell you all that we've accomplished a lot of great things. But we have to make sure that our accomplishments are doing what we set out to have them do. So we need to make sure that what we've developed is actually working to address racial equity concerns within the city of Bloomington. How are we gonna go about this? Well, for example, what we are undertaking is a qualitative assessment of criminal case resolutions. What this means is looking at our criminal cases and seeing how we are resolving them. There's a number of ways that a criminal case can be resolved in the criminal justice system. Diversion is one of them. So we're actively tracking the number of cases that enter diversion. And we also would like to use race-based data from the court system in order to ensure that we are moving toward a more racially equitable resolution of cases. It is important to note that the court system is the holder of this race-based data. And so we are going to have to work to achieve access to that information in order to complete this assessment. It's also important to know that every single criminal case involves an individual person in unique factual circumstances and may or may not also involve a victim who has their own unique impacts as a result of the crime. And so large And so large statistical overviews, while useful, are only part of the story when we're evaluating how we handle criminal cases. Another goal we have is to ensure that we have continued funding for our 2021 accomplishments. Specifically, the Justice Point program was allowed to expand and operate at a reduced cost level for its participants because Justice Point and Bloomington were able to work together to have Justice Point secure grant funding. As you well know, grant funding is an annual endeavor. And so Justice Point is working on that. However, if they're unable to secure grant funding for the future, we will need to look to other sources of funding in order to be sure that we can continue offering diversionary options to the defendants in Bloomington. We look forward to connecting with the community. As other REITs have mentioned, we want to increase our presence at local high schools. We want to offer mentorship and shadowing opportunities as well as internships and externships. And we also look forward to connecting with BIPOC bar associations in the legal community. Finally, we are excited to discharge racial covenants on city-owned properties and would, we would need an extern in order to facilitate that discharge. And with that, I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jennifer. At this time, I will ask that we have our presenters come back to the podium. And I will turn it over to Acting Mayor Carter in the council to ask any questions that you may have. And while they come to the podium, one other thing that I wanted to acknowledge is that each of our racial equity action teams that are presenting here today, in fact, all of our racial equity action teams have their department directors as members. And so they attend meetings and support the staff in doing this work. So thank you to Carla Henderson and Diane Kirby and Melissa Mandershey. I'll thank you here tonight and the others later for supporting your teams and doing this great work.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. So I guess I just want to, before I turn it over to the rest of the council for questions, I did want to just share a little bit of information for those who might be listening tonight at home or for those in the council chambers, just a little background about the racial equity work and where it's come from and the fact that it really is, it does stem from many years of commitment and work from the city. So back in 2016, the city set diversity, equity, and inclusion as a strategic priority, got involved in the GARE, the Government Alliance on Race Inequality. And then in 2019, Faith Jackson was hired. And I would say that probably helped really spur or build momentum for our work moving forward. And then particularly when we passed the Racial Equity Business Plan in 2020 and the REITs were created and just to see the really incredible and powerful work that you all are doing, it's just, it's really amazing. I truly believe that we are leading the way across the country. Jamie, you know more than I do, so maybe not, I have no idea. No, we are. And so just want to thank you all. I know that, as was mentioned at the beginning, this is work that goes above and beyond your day-to-day duties. And so just really appreciate your commitment and your persistence in doing this work. So with that, I will see if any of my fellow colleagues up here have any questions. Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Acting Mayor. So the community development folks, can you tell me more about that anti-displacement policy work? That sounds really interesting. It's just not something I'm familiar with.
Yeah, so this is relatively new endeavor for us. We're still in that research and development process of it. But we're looking to a couple of different things, one of which is Richfield has a similar policy that we're looking to. So some adjacent communities have displaced anti-displacement policies or displacement policies there. The wording can kind of vary and it depends on how you want to go about it. Some of it is proactive, some of it is reactive. And so that's what a lot of our team is working on right now to determine what is best for the city of Bloomington. There'll be some outreach, discovery of what's locally. There's also a lot of things that are happening countrywide. There's a lot of this going on in LA and Seattle. So looking to other real frontrunners to see where do we go with this? Making sure that as we look at some big events and venues coming forward here in Bloomington, that we don't see gentrification happening in our neighborhood nodes that are really crucial, that can really much affect our BIPOC communities and small business owners. So we're kind of starting from this, you know, the beginning seeds of this all. But we want to make sure that we're taking a real thoughtful approach to it.
Thank you. I look forward to hearing more about that. And then community services folks, the mesh program, how is that different than traditional at-home, excuse me, at-home visiting programs? Or maybe it's not, but I, how is that different? What makes that, what makes it extended, for example?
Yeah, so the mesh program is, it's a program where families who voluntarily sign up for it, it usually lasts for about two years. Families who voluntarily sign off can sign out of that program at any time. So it's not like their, you know, their commitment that they're showing. If they are an understanding of it and they understand like the idea of the mesh program and they feel more comfortable with parenting, they can drop out of that program the moment they start to notice like, I'm okay. It is relatively, there's a lot of similarities between other home visiting programs. I know before we started implementing the mesh program, we had HFA, the Healthy Families America program. The difference is the, like, the duration of our visits and the topics that we cover. There was polls and studies that were shown about what topics are most important during the development of that child's life. In the beginning, it's a lot about teaching, about safety, especially new mothers, about, you know, breastfeeding, questions you may have about that, illnesses, things to watch out for, especially development, like what is normal, what is not normal? When you're a new mother, you don't really know. You have this little human being at home and you're like, what do I do? So for us to be able to, first of all, it's an honor for us to be, you know, be able to visit your home that you opened up to us and to walk you through that process up until two years, which is studied to show that those are the most vital years of development and that could really make it or make or break children. So it's really all about focused, again, on development, the development of the child. And the program means specifically about like the topics that we choose that are more, most important. And then of course about like bonding between the child and the mother, you know, and the father. I mean, the whole family really. And it's proven after, you know, implementing this program for about six months, the changes that we're seeing with the families that are using the program. So yeah.
Mayor, if I could just, if I could just say, if I could just add excellent thing. The one other piece of this program and as moving to it also is just the amount of folks in the neighborhoods out here in Bloomington that we can really service as well by making the switch. And, you know, and oh, no, Mayor, that you know, when we heard this presentation, we jumped at the opportunity for this. So I just, you know, there's so much more that we could cover with this. But one of the main pieces of this too is just the breadth and the ability of our staff to be able to really give a direct service in a way that in the old model you just really couldn't do. So.
Thank you. That's, that's really helpful information. And I will, I will say as the parent of a four-year-old, that what do I do feeling? I don't think it's gone away yet and I don't think it will.
All right. Does anybody else? Councilmember Nelson?
My kids are 21 and 18. It doesn't go away. Hopefully they're not watching. Just a quick question for community development. There was a note that working with the career counselors at Kennedy, are we also working with Jefferson and then the other middle schools, Olson and Oak Grove?
Yes, correct. So those are the ones that we've made direct contact with. A few of the schools have had some change in partnerships and leadership. So we're just kind of going with the flow. As COVID's changed, we haven't had the chance to really hone in on those in person. But absolutely, that's our, that's our intent is to make sure that we have someone at every school here in Bloomington that we can make contact with.
Great. I appreciate that. And then just a quick follow-up on that, if I might, Mayor. So the, have we had any interaction or engagement with the school board or the school district leadership in terms of what they're doing? And so we can coordinate those efforts?
Not directly. We were trying to come at this as a wholehearted approach with other CD REIT or, excuse me, other REIT members so that the schools weren't having different REIT teams peppered in. So I know that our team that's working on education is trying to come at it as a collective unit so that we don't overwhelm them. I think that ultimately would be super helpful to have. I know there's also a shadowing program, I believe, for all of you that we are looking to kind of mirror in the future as well. So sometimes it's best to not recreate the wheel and kind of look to things that are already in place. So that is something that's on our agenda. And I think that our education team is hoping to meet with some other REIT members as well so that we can come at it collectively. And I believe that one of our team is trying to hope had that up.
Okay. Thank you very much. And for the city manager, I might suggest we put that as a potential agenda item if we ever meet with the school board again.
Mr. Mayor and councilmem, Mr. Mayor, some habits die hard. Acting Mayor and councilmembers, the superintendent and I are trying to identify a date. And right now we're looking at September. Hopefully we'll be able to get a date on the calendar soon.
No worries. Just makes me feel better, or feel better about when I mess up. So, yeah. All right. Anybody else? Councilmember DeLisandro.
Thank you, Ms. Acting Mayor. Thank you, folks, for this first question. I want to know what the shirt's about. I love it.
Oh, yes. So it's kind of hidden, but we've got heartbeat of the city. For those of you who have maybe heard our director, Carla Henderson, talk about how community development, as she likes to think and as us as a team like to think, we really are the heartbeat of the city. So we're wearing it loud and proud today. We have some lovely people here in support. And there is CD REIT on the back, but I wanted to keep the blazer to stay professional. We did represent, we're doing a little bit of a flex, but we're hoping to see this. We want to make sure that, you know, our REIT work is at the front and center. And if that means getting some t-shirts going, by all means, that's what we want to do. So heartbeat of the city, right?
Appreciate the solidarity that, absolutely wonderful. Second question, if I may. So for the folks on the phone around your restorative court, I don't have any specific question, but I would love to, and I assume we can have this on a future agenda item, love to have you come back and give us a status report on how that's going. I think you mentioned that it was just since June 1st that it's been up and running. But obviously the metrics that Minneapolis is seeing are positive. And I'd love to know if, you know, we meet or exceed those expectations. So thank you for your work on that. I know it was a heavy lift and appreciate the opportunity to, to hear how that's going. I'd also love to get, if possible, a bit more of a deep dive on the, on the mesh program at some point in the future. I think it's wonderful and I wasn't on council when you all created that, but it sounds amazing. And if we can get a, you know, an end of year update or something like that on it, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Councilmember Loman.
I have all three quick questions here. So I see that there are interns and I just assume that they're paid?
Yes. Yes, we do have paid internships.
All right, great. That's excellent.
That's the intent and goal.
Great. Excellent. I was a paid intern and that was always a great, great experience here at the city of Bloomington. So, and then I had the opportunity, I think it was last Monday, we had a Just Deeds presentation at the Rotary Program, which I think was just a fascinating kind of depiction of what's been going on there with that and what's been happening in Bloomington. So we did get a little bit of a, of an update in terms of what's happening there. And one of the questions that I thought was really interesting that was asked at the point in time by one of the members that was there was why is this important? And I think that staff really did an excellent job of talking about, you know, why is this work in and of itself important that we are kind of diving into? We've seen it on many occasions where we've had before where Faith Jackson's put forth and said, hey, you know, here's what the demographics look like in the city. And we are, we are seeing changes and we want to be proactive and be, be ready for these changes and not kind of let it happen to us. And so I, I too, as one councilmember, want to thank you for your proactive, proactive work in the things that you're doing here. These aren't easy things to do and people ask questions and they're, and they're pointed and sometimes you kind of get discouraged, but I want to encourage you to continue to do that work. And with that being said, I just had one last question, Mayor. With this displacement piece, I've seen it work a little bit in Eagan when there was some, they wanted to redevelop an area. They really worked with the businesses that were there and were able to try to find a different place for them to locate within the city. And I just was always very, I thought that was great because I think it just, it, in a sense, kind of said, hey, you know what? You belong to this body of this, the city here in a sense like a heartbeat does, right? So I know that was shameful. But one of the questions that I had around that is how do these, the cities, and we don't have to answer it all right now, how do they, how do they pay for that, maintain that over time? You know, whenever you get something going, you want to be able to, you know, as important as that is to sustain that over time.
That's kind of part of this research plan that we're working on right now. And a lot of that is a matter of whether we're going to come at this from a proactive approach or a reactive approach, which kind of defines that displacement versus anti-displacement. There's a lot of people that are kind of reactive and that probably is a little bit less funny. Whereas if we're in a proactive approach, we are trying to create maybe a population list of, okay, we do want to redevelop this node in this neighborhood, but we want to make sure that we have attainable space for these small businesses that are already there. How do we make sure they're possibly on a top list? How do we make sure that they're important and they feel heard so that they're not just kicked out, but that the community itself does want to see improvements in those areas? So trying to tackle both of those will take funds. I imagine that's going to be a combination of some funding that we'll have to do, some grant work that we'll probably have to do, similar to what we're working on with the Small Business Resource Center and finding a way to make sure that that's fluid year in and year out. I'm hoping and I think that we'll see that there is a need for some of that proactive approach. But it does, it does create a little bit more of a need for higher funds and potentially more bodies and seats to figure out, well, how do we make sure we have a list of contacts for that and make sure that we make these businesses important?
Thank you. You know, I will also just add one comment that that was something we heard in the Lyndale Avenue retrofit listening process that, you know, people were excited about Lyndale getting improved, but also worried about all of the small businesses that are located along Lyndale. So really awesome work and excited to hear more about that as your research moves forward. So with that, I think we will move to our next agenda item. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. So our next agenda on, our next item on our agenda is our consent business. And Councilmember Coulter has the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. I do indeed. I have not heard of any holds from anyone. And I'm looking around to confirm that statement and.
Could I, could I hold 3.7? Because I always don't want to miss an opportunity either for yourself or for myself to ask a question about how we use salt in Bloomington. I know it's the wrong time of year, but why not?
All right. It's never, never too early to talk about ice on the roads in Minnesota. So that being the case, oh.
I have a point of order question, if I may. I see a typo in 310 and I didn't know whether or not that is cause for a hold.
Thank you for the question and it does not sound like it is.
Councilmember DeLisandro, is it the item that we talked about? Yeah, no, I'm fine with it. Thank you, though.
Thank you.
Okay. With that being said, I'm going to hold 3.2's instead as a donation to the city. So I will move items 3.1, 3.3 through 3.6 and 3.8 through 3.12.
Second.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Coulter. Had my, my freeze there for a second. And second by Councilmember Loman. No further discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six-oh. I didn't, I just realized that I did not say aye. Aye. All right. So we will go to 3.7.
Thank you, Mayor. So I held that not because I had a problem at all with salt being purchased. In fact, I'm quite in favor of having salt being purchased within the city. But I think there's some things that our city does. We just got back from getting all, all five steps of the Green Step Cities and want to give us an opportunity to talk about how we're being sustainable with our salt program.
So Acting Mayor, Councilmember, Councilmember Loman, thanks for the opportunity. I think what you're speaking to is our anti-icing program and kind of our attitude about salt usage. I mean, I think as we all know, we like to use salt in the winter because we like our roads to be as safe as possible. That's the good side of salt. The bad side of salt is that it's probably one of the biggest contaminants we have in our water bodies. And we have a total maximum daily load limit, TDML, on Nine Mile Creek, which is a chloride one, which is directly related to salt. So we're very active in trying to figure out how do we reduce the amount of salt that we use and still have safe roadways? So I think as you've seen for many years, we're, we're kind of changing our technologies. You're seeing much more of the roadway striping. That's anti-icing and pre-wetting of, of the roadway. Again, the idea is that if you put that material down at the right time, you will use in the end much less salt. And so we track very tightly the amount of salt we use and exactly And so we track very tightly the amount of salt we use and exactly where we put it. So we try to minimize it in areas that are near lakes and our storm source systems that are direct inputs to Nine Mile Creek and to lakes. And we also try to anticipate weather events by good forecasting and to do that anti-icing work before we actually do that, the plowing in and of itself. So it's kind of anticipating those things. We're kind of proud of that work and we've won several awards from the Salt Institute and from the Fresh Water Society. And so if you were to talk to some of the folks in our maintenance division, they're somewhat geeky about their mixing of these salt mixtures and how well they work. It's kind of a dangerous thing at some point because if you put it down the wrong mixture when it's too cold, you can actually make a skating rink on the roadway. And so they're very careful about that and watch extremely carefully throughout the winter.
Any other questions? Councilmember DeLassandra?
Well, it's on the thing. I'm just kind of curious. Thank you for the opportunity to ask a question. How, is this, is this our, our salt load for a year? Or how much salt is it that we're purchasing and how long does it last?
This is, hopefully this is the salt load for the year. We have to put an order in earlier in the, in the spring for it. And this is actually awarding it. And we are kind of guaranteed this amount. We may, if we don't use this, we'll, we'll have to give back a little bit. But this is the maximum amount that we can use in a year.
And is that, is that typical that we buy it year over year? We don't have a place to store it year over year?
That is correct. We buy it year over year. We do store the bulk of it for a given season in our salt shed, which is just north of the Public Works Facility off of 94th Street, can hold a great deal of salt. And you'll note that there's kind of two types of salt we buy. We treated salt, that's kind of the green stuff you see in trucks. And again, that is treated to work more efficiently at lower temperatures. And so it uses less total salt. And then the regular salt we use primarily for mixing that anti-icing material that we put down as a liquid.
One final question, if I may. Is there any economic benefit to buying more? Is there any kind of, you know, does the price fluctuate? And are we in like surplus, you know, kind of situations? I'm just wondering if we ever consider that or if it doesn't really materially make a difference.
I don't know if it actually makes a material difference. And I think the way this, the salt distribution in the state is set up and we buy this off the state contract is that typically there's kind of one reckoning for salt use each year and kind of our maximums are set. So traditionally, I think in most communities, it's purchased once a year.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Keel. With that, Councilmember Loman?
Yeah, I figure since we're during hot seasons of our times, maybe give us a little cool off here. So with that being said, I'll go ahead and move approval of purchase of up to 800 tons of regular road salt at a cost of 76.19 per ton under State of Minnesota Contract Number 177613 from Compass Materials America Incorporated. And up to 3,200 tons of treated road salt at a cost of $104 per ton under State of Minnesota Contract 177610 from Cargill Incorporated.
Second.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Loman and a second by Councilmember DeLassandra with no further discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. So with that, we will move on to item 3.2.
Thank you, Mayor. And just quickly before we get to this, a procedural question. Since this has been pulled from consent, I see it's two motions. Do we have to take those as two separate motions?
Acting Mayor and councilmembers, I would prefer that you do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just wanted to clarify that on the front end. So I just wanted to pull this. This is a, the donations this evening and we received last October, a very generous donation from Susan and Larry Hassler with regards to the purchase of a new K-9 unit for our Bloomington Police Department. And we received as well a donation from the United States Police K-9 Association Region 18 to fund the K-9 training. And so I just wanted to call that out and thank the Hasslers for their very generous contribution to our department. I assume this is last October. I assume staff has or will send appropriate thank yous. But just again, very, very grateful for the support of the community and for that donation. So unless anyone has anything further to add, I will go ahead and we'll take the first one, move to adopt a resolution accepting donations as listed.
Second.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Coulter and a second by Councilmember Loman with no further discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six zero.
Mayor, I will move to approve the budget adjustment in the resolution to move $15,500 from the general fund to the Police Special Revenue Grants and Projects Fund for the K-9 unit.
Second.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Coulter and a second by Councilmember Loman with no further discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. All right. So with that, we are through our consent business. And we are moving to our hearings, resolutions and ordinances. So let me find the motion that I need to make. So I would like to make a motion to hold open and continue to hold open until July 11th, 2022, public hearings regarding ordinances amending city charter section 2.03, section 3.01 and section 4.06.
Second.
All right, so.
Sorry, Mayor, just to clarify for the public, because this is now the second time we've had to continue. These are votes related to amending the city charter, which require a unanimous seven votes of the city council. And obviously we don't have seven votes on the city council present tonight. So that's why we are continuing to get these again. Just wanted to clarify that for the folks watching at home.
Thank you for clarifying that, Councilmember Coulter. City Manager, did you want to make any comments or?
Acting Mayor is going to make the exact same point as Councilmember Coulter. And our city attorney has her microphone turned on, I imagine, to make a very similar point. We're all singing the same song up here.
Well, Mayor members, our Acting Mayor members, I would like to strongly encourage everyone to be here at the July meeting. Because if not, we have to start over again, the whole thing. So, yeah. So let's all be here.
All right. Nobody can get COVID, okay. Sounds good. All right. So with that, I made the motion and Councilmember Loman, did you second? All right, thank you. So with no further discussion on this, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. All right. So that moves us to item 4.4. The public hearing on the partial vacation of Lyndale Lane.
Good evening, Council. This is a fairly straightforward vacation for, that you've seen previously. This one's a little unique in the fact that it is in three dimensions. Normally you see it in two dimensions. And so what we're asking tonight is to vacate the footings, stem walls and bridge structure over Lyndale Lane in order to facilitate the Mall of America Future Water Park and construction on top of the existing bridge structure.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Is that everything? Okay. So do I open the public hearing now? Okay. Any questions before we open the public hearing? Okay, I see no questions. So with that, we will open the public hearing. Is there anybody in the chambers who would like to make a comment during this public hearing related to item 4.4? I am not seeing anybody. Is there anybody on the phone?
Acting Mayor, there's no one on the phone.
Okay. So with that, would anybody like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
Mayor, I'd be happy to make that motion to close the public hearing.
All right. So Councilmember Loman has made the motion to close the public hearing and Councilmember Martin has seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries six zero. All right, so. Any other discussion, questions? Okay. Councilmember Nelson? I mean, Martin.
That works too. Mayor, I'm. You know what? This is a long one.
I am now assigning.
All right, I'm happy to make the motion, Mayor. Mayor, I will move that in the interest of the public to adopt an ordinance approving the partial vacation of Lyndale Lane, East City First Street, as dedicated in the plaits of Airport South Edition, Mall of America, Mall of America Fifth Edition and Mall of America Eighth Edition, according to the recorded plaits thereof, Hennepin County, Minnesota.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion by Councilmember Martin and a second by Councilmember DeLassandra with no further discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. All right, great. So that ends the section of our agenda on hearings, resolutions and ordinances. And we did amend the agenda at the beginning of the meeting. And so we are going to first have a discussion, presentation on the special assessment policy updates. And we do have a public comment period that we are going to open up after your presentation. Great, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Good evening, Acting Mayor, councilmembers. Before you this evening, discuss our special assessment policy and some updates or proposed updates to it. Just for a little background, the city's special assessment policy has been in place since 1962. The last update we did to this was in 2014. So we do update it from time to time and this is one of those times. So kind of some background on the proposed updates and how they came to be. When we came before you in the fall of 2021 with our preliminary street listing for our 2022 PMP reconstruct project, Lyndale Avenue, a segment of Lyndale Avenue from 106th Street to the South Terminus was originally included in the street listing. And as part of that, we noticed all of the properties that were, that abutted that roadway and informed them of the potential project. And also we provided them an estimated assessment at that time per state statute for our special assessments. When we were calculating those, those special assessments or estimated assessments, it became clear to staff that we did not have the methodology in place in our current policy to accurately reflect the assessments for properties within the Bluffs on Sands Pierre neighborhood. This was a little, this was an interesting or unique situation where we had a private road that was serving the neighborhood that had access onto the public roadway. However, the private road was its own parcel. There wasn't an underlying parent parcel like we would see normally with a large townhome development or other high-density housing. So we didn't have the correct tools in place to be able to accurately provide an estimated assessment. So that resulted in varying assessments for properties that were very, that were very similar. So one thing that we had in our policy was we addressed one and two family homes and we addressed fourplexes and larger developments. There was a gap in those triplexes or three-family homes. So within the Bluffs on Sands Pierre community, there are very similar homes that may be part of a triplex and a duplex. And they received varying special assessment, estimated special assessments, which caused many questions, which we knew going into the process. So when we met with them last fall, we told them that if their street is considered or is ordered for the project, that changes will be made to the special assessment policy prior to the final assessments being sent out. Ultimately, that section of Lyndale Avenue was removed from the 2022 PMP project due to some consolidation with some potential projects at the bottom of the Lyndale Avenue, down at the river bottoms there. But we still wanted to move forward with the changes or the updates to the special assessment policy. So when that segment does come back up, that we have the tools in place to accurately reflect the assessments for those particular properties. So what we did is following the ordering of the project for the 2022 PMP, staff went back and worked on some, some different ways of calculating the assessments for those properties and kind of brainstorm those. Following those, that work, we met with representatives in the Bluffs on Sands Pierre community and presented those kind of alternatives. At that point, we had kind of narrowed it down to three alternatives, which we'll share with you here in a second. And met with the neighborhood and got their feedback on, went through kind of the methodology between each of them and asked them to give us some feedback as well. So we had a very constructive conversation in March with the representatives in the neighborhood. Since then, the neighborhood representatives went back to the entire neighborhood and received feedback on the proposed methodology that the city provided them. And that email is included in your attachments here this evening. And they had a pretty. It was a consistent request or a consistent response to the policies that we had in place. One methodology definitely came out above all the other ones here, which I'll go into in a second. So with that, let's talk first about the first proposed change would be the land use definition update. This is what I was kind of referring to previously. Our current policy says single and two-family does not address three-family. So we are recommending to add this three-family here. So single, two and three-family or triplex units would be assessed at that same 25% rate. So it really just cleans up that gap that we currently had in our policy. So now we have single through three-family and then fourplexes that are not or addressed. So we don't have that, that gap that we currently have right now. And by doing this, this would, for the Bluffs on Sands Pierre community in particular, this would treat all the properties within, within that community at the same rate. So again, wanted to be consistent with how we apply our methodology to similar properties. So the next thing we looked at was the adjusted front footage calculation options or the AFF options. Next slide, please. And we looked at three different options for this. Again, we want a methodology that reflects the actual special benefit that these properties would receive from any particular project. So we, that, we kind of looked at what we have currently in place in our policy and tried to mirror that to see what we could best fit or modify to make work for situations such as the Bluffs on Sands Pierre neighborhood. So the first option we proposed would be a single assessment. So this was created by creating a parent parcel. So there's not a current parent parcel right now. When I say parent parcel, what I mean, and I'll show on my next slide here in a second, is an underlying parcel that we calculated an AFF off of. So in the case of the Bluffs on Sands Pierre community, we don't have that. So it's, it makes it unique. So this option would create a pseudo-parent parcel that we would use to calculate the AFF. And then from that, calculate a total assessment for the association. And then with option A, what we would do is we would just assess the homeowners association that entire amount. So they would get one bill, so it encumber one of the parcels within that homeowners association. And then they would have the ability to decide how that is split amongst all their members. Next slide, please. So this slide here, it shows the calculation of how that AFF is calculated. So you can see here, the blue represents, there's 63 parcels in the Bluffs on Sands Pierre community. So taking that outline of all 63, this blue represents, if we were to say, this is just one large parcel. And then from that, we use our tools already in place to adjust, to calculate our frontages. So that's what is being displayed here. On the bottom in the orange there, that is a scenic easement. So there's no development in there. So that's not included in that area calculation when we go through and calculate our AFFs, which I, you know, describe every fall when I meet with everyone here. So you can see we have two frontages there. And then we would use that, those frontages multiplied by the rate of the improvement to calculate a total assessment for the whole neighborhood. And then we would apply that in option A. That total assessment would be sent to the neighborhood association and then they could decide how it was split amongst their members. Next slide, please. So option B is similar. Again, we take that overall parent parcel concept, establish that AFF, establish that total assessment. But in this option, the assessments would be split evenly amongst all the parcels. So we would take the total amount divided by the number of parcels. In the case of the Bluffs on Sands Pierre community, that's 63 parcels. And each individual property owner would receive a bill in that exact amount. So to equal that total assessment for the overall parcel. So this option, each individual homeowner or parcel owner would have an assessment and they could decide if they wanted to pay it in full, have it spread out over 10 years or prepay with no interest applied. So it would give the flexibility to each individual property owner how they wanted to deal with their assessment. Next slide, please. And the third option would be, again, taking that overall parent parcel concept and establishing that total assessment for the neighborhood. But this one would be a little different is where we would actually divide the assessments for the individual parcels based on the individual AFFs of each parcel. So if you go to the next slide, I could show you. So we have, this is an example, this is an individual parcel within the Bluffs on Sands Pierre community, one of the 63 parcels. Lyndale Bluffs Trail is the private roadway. Our current policy though says if we want to establish the AFF for an individual property, we can do that using the private roadway. And that's what you see here. So for instance, this parcel has a frontage of 66. So if option C, what we would do is we would take the individual AFFs of all the parcels involved in the Bluffs area and then for this particular parcel would pay their percentage of that total overall AFF. So this, the bills would be subject to the actual area of the AFF of each parcel. So in this case, the parcel to the south there, you can see that's a smaller area. That parcel would receive a smaller bill than the parcel to the north. So they would fluctuate a little bit. So some of the larger parcels would see a larger assessment, some of the smaller parcels would see a smaller assessment. But the total dollars assessed for the neighborhood remain the same in option C. And with that, we took these, all these options to the, like I said, we presented these to the Bluffs on Sands Pierre representatives in March. They took them back to their members. They came back and their option was option B overwhelmingly from the neighborhood that they received feedback from. And that is the option where the assessment, the total assessment is split evenly amongst all the parcels within the association. And that's staff's recommendation as well. staff's recommendation as well. So the two proposed changes that we have that are reflected in the policy materials that were included in your council items this evening is, one, to include the three-family land use in our definition so that we clean up that gap I mentioned earlier. The second would be to add a new AFF calculation, which is highlighted, again, in the attachment, that would address the single and two-family lots, or, yes, excuse me, single and two-family lots within a homeowners' association served by a private roadway such as the Bluffs on San Pierre neighborhood. And with that, we do have a recommended action, and I'm happy to take any questions on any of those items.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Questions? Councilmember Lowman?
Yeah, well, before I get started, Mayor, I just want to say thank you to the staff for the work that was done. This was no small undertaking to do this, and we just want to thank you for the hard work that went into this. So much appreciated. So I did have a couple of questions. One is just to clarify with the recommended plan, would the assessments go directly to the homeowners, or is that still going to be, I know at one point it was going to be sent to the, you know, the homeowners' place and then backed out. So could you help clarify?
Absolutely. Acting Mayor, Councilmember Lowman, the assessments would be sent to each individual parcel. So yes, we would send out 63 assessment notices to each individual parcel for the determined amount, correct?
And then there was another, just for clarification, it looked like when I looked at the map for the assessment that it went to the Bluffs, but there was some understanding from some of the residents that were there that it actually, the assessment went all the way down to the end of the dock or to the end of the road of Lindell there. Could you help clarify that in terms of where that assessment kind of goes for the property?
So the assessments would be based, if you actually, if you can go back to the slide of the overall, thank you. So for, for this particular neighborhood, for the Bluffs neighborhood, the assessments would be based on that blue shape right there. So it's the area of the, all of the parcels within the Bluffs on San Pierre neighborhood minus that scenic overlook, or scenic easement on the south side, because we don't include those. That's not developable, so that's not included in our calculations for our AFF. So that's what the total, the total assessment amount would be based on.
Thanks for clarifying that in terms of where that is. And then the last kind of question that I had was there were some funds, and my understanding was that were available. I know that during the conversation, when this had come forward, there was this question in terms of, you know, why aren't those funds available to be utilized to reduce the, you know, the, the assessment here? Because, you know, that was in this area. So just help me understand that as a, as a council member and those folks who are watching from home, trying to understand, you know, why, why aren't we getting a cut of that? Or maybe they are getting a cut of that. Help, help me understand what's happening with that.
Absolutely. Acting Mayor, Councilmember Lowman, the funds you're, you're speaking of are the funds that we received from Ames Construction during the construction of the 35W Bridge for wear and tear on Lindell Avenue. And we have, those funds have been set aside in our earmark to be used when this segment of Lindell Avenue is reconstructed. So those funds will be applied to the surfacing cost and subtracted from that before we actually calculate the assessment. So when the Lindell Avenue segment from 106 South is reconstructed, those funds will be applied. So the total cost of that improvement will be subtracted by the funds, those funds of approximately $185,000 to lower the overall rate for everyone that's included that has an assessment for a surfacing improvement during that year. So we don't have individual rates for each individual street segment. We have a rate for the entire project for that year. So those funds are being held and will be applied to the year that the Lindell Avenue segment will be applied. So they will be seeing some reduction from that.
Okay, so my understanding then, so right now, the assessment right now is, is not for Lindell right now. This is just for this area, right? Just help me understand that, because I think that, that what folks are understanding is none of those funds are going to be applied to the assessment at all. I mean, obviously, right now, because they're not looking at, at Lindell. But so help clarify that.
Yep. So there's no, those funds are not being utilized this year. So what, before you this evening, is the, the calculation of methodology that we would use when this neighborhood is subject to an assessment. So when Lindell Avenue adjacent to their properties is reconstructed, the changes in, in our policy tonight would help us with our methodology when we calculate those. And then those funds that you mentioned, those would be applied when this segment is, is constructed, and that would be subtracted from the overall surfacing cost. So they would see a reduction in their actual rate when it's calculated based on the, the total AFF of all the properties included in the, in the project of that year.
All right. Councilmember De Lassandro, and then Councilmember Nelson.
I, thank you, Acting Mayor. Hello, how are you?
Good evening.
I, I just had one question for clarification here on the email that was sent by Mr. Mueller indicates that they've received, they received 35 responses with 31 preferring option A and four preferring option B, but you kept preferring the option B. So I just wanted to make sure I understood. At some point, option A became option B or something?
Correct. I apologize for the confusion. Yes, that's a good point of clarification. So when we met with them in, in March, excuse me, we had different lettering as far as the different options. So option B on the email was referring to the slides we provided to them during our neighborhood meeting, which differed from this. So I apologize for the confusion. But that was, yes, that's a good clarification. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Mike, I got two quick questions for you. First one is, from staff's point of view, do the outcomes of using this method seem to be consistent with how other properties throughout the city are assessed? I know it's not going to be exact, but do, do they seem reasonable?
They do. And looking at the total cost, the total dollar value, I mean, using the rates that we provided for the estimated assessments for 2021, the total value, or the total assessment amount for the neighborhood using this methodology would reduce it by almost two-thirds of what they would have been assessed with the original policy. And I think that's important because the original policy assessment, in my professional opinion, there's the special benefit analysis, which we do. So regardless, after we, we calculate our assessments, we do our special benefit analysis, and they'll actually go out and we'll say, look at this neighborhood and tell us if our, if our assessment calculations are in line with the benefit these properties receive from the project. And using our current policy, there's no way, based on what we've seen before, that we'd be able to justify that, which means we would be, before you ask, to adjust those assessment amounts down. With this new policy, I see those more in line, looking at about 1,500 per, per unit. That's more in line with what we've seen for other similar developments, you know, townhomes, other, you know, higher-density developments. So I would assume that that would be, or be comfortable more with that number. And again, we would check that against our special, our special benefit analysis and make sure that those numbers are in line.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question was regarding what Councilmember Lowman was talking about, the money from Ames. Is that, are there any other properties impacted by the part of Lindell that will be done with the Ames money or that has to be done because of that?
Acting Mayor, Councilmember. So again, the Ames money would be applied, there'll be a total dollar value for all the surfacing costs for the reconstruction project, the year that Lindell Avenue segment is included. So the way that would be applied is there'll be a total cost for that work. We will subtract the Ames money from that total cost, so we'll have a new total cost. And then from that, we will calculate our rates, so our 25% rate and 50% rate. So they're going to see a savings of the total cost value is going to go down. So what we actually calculate the assessment rates on will be that lower number. So yes, the year that that segment is applied, those funds will be applied. But again, we don't have individual rates for each individual street segment. So it'll be applied to every person that's subject to a surfacing assessment for that particular year that the Lindell Avenue segment is, is constructed.
So, and we can talk about this more, but that is a little bit of a concern, because it, it's my understanding that this, that that road reconstruction is limited to this neighborhood, and it seems like everyone that's getting assessed in that year will get a discount, not just this neighborhood, or not just the parcels that are impacted by that, if that makes sense. And I think maybe that's what you were kind of getting to, and I think maybe some of the homeowners are like, if that money was for this part of it, and, you know, then it should go to those homeowners that are adjacent to it. And I don't know if there's a mechanism to do that instead of spreading it across all of the property owners that are in that particular year. I mean, I guess maybe that's a question for the city manager, if, if it could be just applied to the assessment amounts for any properties that are directly impacted by that section.
Mr. Vabri?
Councilmember Nelson, can you ask it one more time?
Yeah. Is it possible, instead of reducing the overall cost and then saving everybody that year money, to reduce the assessments of those properties that are adjacent to whatever work they agreed to pay for?
And, and this is specific to the Lindell Avenue and how the Ames funds get, apply?
Yep.
And I think the issue here is, and I'll look to Brian to clarify this a little bit more, is whenever we receive a deposit like that, we don't allocate specifically for a stretch like this. It just sort of goes into the larger project fund. So it'd be a little bit of a deviation from past practice to do that. Is that accurate, Brian?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. And I think another thing to think about, too, is when you think about that, is that we do receive other, other funding sources that go towards, you know, for a year, we may have some street segments that are part of a state aid funding that we have state aid funds for. We may have a residential street. So overall, the, the, the value is being passed along to all the residents in Bloomington. So, and that's kind of common for, you know, other funding sources that we have for other years as well.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're clear on that. That's how that works. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. And again, just want to reiterate what you said previously. That specific decision is not what we're deciding tonight.
Correct.
We're really talking about the policy language for our special assessment that then will be applied to all properties that are relevant across the city. So we'll be revisiting this discussion specifically at a later date.
Correct, Acting Mayor. When, yeah, when the Lindell Avenue segment is, is scheduled or on the, be considered for the reconstruct project, yes, that conversation will be having again.
Okay, thank you. So Councilmember De Lassandro?
Thank you, Acting Mayor. Just one quick clarification. Define the, the Lindell segment, just for everybody's edification. Is it 98th Street all the way back to the Bluff?
No, I'm sorry. It's 106th Street, south to the, the South Terminus or the Boat Lounge, I think.
Okay, so that's, that's, I mean, that's the whole segment?
Correct.
And, and how many properties outside of the Bluffs that were, of San Pierre that we're talking about? How many other properties exist in that segment, off the top of your head?
Um, I'm thinking roughly, I would, I think maybe 10 more parcels, give or take, 10 to 12 parcels, I think, along that segment.
Okay.
Just off the top of my head, somewhere in that range.
That's okay. I appreciate it. Thank you. That's it.
And, and those are commercial properties for the most part, right?
Commercial, yeah, exactly. And there's also U.S. Fish and Wildlife and some other properties. So yes, exactly. This is the only residential properties, single, single, two and three-family properties are the Bluffs on San Pierre neighborhood on that segment.
Councilmember Lowman?
Thank you. I know that we're not talking about, you know, the Ames money right now. However, if we wait till it's time to have the conversation, there wouldn't be enough time, I understand, for staff to even look to see if there was another way to, to do that assessment. While I'm loathe to try to, while you're right in the middle of, of a process, to, to change that, that, change that process. So I want to be careful that, you know, what, what I'm asking. But I would like to know if we were to try to redirect that money in some other way, what it would take to kind of do that, do that research. If other cities are doing that, I don't know if it makes sense to, to send all that money to them, given that, you know, we do a 25%, and then the city covers the other 75%. And so, so I am curious about that in terms of a research standpoint. So I don't want to get to when we get ready to have that conversation, and at that point, we're pretty much, we're going to assess that. We're not going to be able to change at that point. So let me throw that back out and just ask that question. Is that something that can be researched relatively quickly, or could we have that discussion now or have staff look into it now?
Acting Mayor, council members, Councilmember Lowman, I would request that if that's a conversation the council wants to have, that's a policy discussion that needs to be further fleshed out. Again, to Brian's point earlier, that when we receive contributions, whether it's MSA funds, or in this case, an agreement for funds to be contributed as an offset of other things, those funds are counted as in the aggregate, because the city is paying for the costs of these projects as well. The special assessments cover a portion of the cost. All other funds pay for a portion of costs, and that's for the benefit of all taxpayers in Bloomington. So essentially, by dedicating a certain amount of funds to a certain project, lowers the benefit of all other taxpayers in Bloomington. So if council is interested in having a conversation about how we treat certain deposits or negotiated contributions, I think that that's one we'd like to bring back to you. And we can certainly do that prior to the, the next point in time when we're going to bring back the, the whole project for discussion. But that's not one that we can resolve tonight.
Obviously not tonight. And I, I just, I thank you for that. I just, the only reason why I, I kind of pushed on it, I know that was one of the, the requests that this neighborhood have had. And so I want to make sure that doesn't get lost in the conversation. Now, if there aren't enough council members tonight, when we get to policy and issue update, want to have that conversation, then I'll, I'll understand and won't move forward. But I can wait to that point in time to bring that forward.
Great. Are there any other questions before we open up the public comment? Okay, I'm not seeing any. So we will go ahead and open up the public comment. If there's anybody in the room who would like to speak to the council here, come on up and please state your name for the record. And before you walk away, just make sure you sign in on the paper.
Will do. Madam Acting Mayor, council members, my name is Nathan Mueller, and it will come as no surprise that I'm from the Lindell Bluffs neighborhood, or Bluffs on San Pierre. So there were three main points that I wanted to be sure to address this evening. Well, to begin with, let me, let me add my thanks to the city staff for, for all the hard work that they did working with us. And Brian, in particular, was extraordinarily good to work with, just, just really terrific cooperative. So very much appreciate that. It may surprise you that we don't agree 100% with every, everything that is currently in place. We, the community did absolutely endorse the option that is chosen, and that is the basis of the policy adjustment proposed tonight. So on that matter, we do agree. On the matter of Ames funding, don't call me out of order just yet, but I, I will say that it is, it is a strong perception, and as, and a, as I have sort of taken on the role of spokesperson for the community in this regard, my ear has been bent on multiple occasions about this topic. So it is a strongly held belief that since the funds were specifically for compensation for the damage to that segment of street, that it would only be reasonable that they be used to reduce the cost to the city and to the neighborhood for the reconstruction of that street. And so to that extent, I would argue either an exception to the standing policy on that basis, or a carve-out in the policy to allow for that, not in, not just in this case, but in future similar circumstances. It, it strikes me that it's, it's perhaps unique in comparison to other funding sources that might present themselves. So I, I ask you on the behalf of our community, please give that due consideration and see if that policy can be adjusted. We did have a reservation initially. We've been assured by city staff that our homeowners' association will not be required to collect special assessments. I want to go on the record as understanding that, to be clear. And then I think the third thing, third and last point, the segment of Lindell Avenue that our neighborhood utilizes and accesses is a very small portion of this project. And this is the other thing that our homeowners with great frequency comment about. Councilmember Lowman, I think you've heard this on a few occasions yourself. I have, I have, well, I want to thank the city for my education about special assessments. I, I've learned a lot about that. If you want me to give a session for you at some point, I could do that. But I think the, the perception is that the assessment is still excessive. What I have communicated to the homeowners, hopefully successfully, is that we understand this all comes out in the wash as we get to the point of the special benefit that our homeowners receive. So I think we're in a stable, peaceful place at this point with the project. I think we can be assured that our homeowners will probably want to challenge the, the special benefit at the point that that's determined. And so just wanted to let you know that that's on the horizon for us when the project does come up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mueller. Is there anybody else in the chamber who would like to speak during this public comment period? Is there anybody on the phone?
Madam Acting Mayor, no one is on the phone.
Okay. So last call, if there's anybody else in the chamber. If not, we will close the public comment for this item. All right, seeing nobody. Are there any other additional questions? I mean, we didn't actually officially, do we have to officially close the public?
I don't think we have to.
Okay. Any additional questions or comments before we vote? Councilmember DeLassandro.
Just making sure, did I understand that the specific question is being tabled and we are, about the Ames money is being tabled, and we're going to talk about it in the business section of our meeting later tonight?
Correct. That's what I understand.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
The, the motions in front of us are not related to this money.
Understood. Yep, thank you.
Councilmember Lomond.
Well, if there aren't any other comments, I'd be happy to make a motion, Mayor.
All right, great.
Mayor, I move to approve the update to the city of Bloomington's general assessment policies.
Do you have a second?
Second.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Lomond and a second by Councilmember DeLassandro with no further discussion on this item. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. All right, thank you, everyone. So now, just cruising through this agenda, it's great. We are going to go to Agenda Item 5.1, which is the HRA Assessment.
Good evening.
Good evening. Got the whole crew.
We are one, we're the heartbeat. So Acting Mayor, councilmembers, we are here tonight to discuss development activities within the city of Bloomington, particularly within the Community Development Department. We believe that our department strives to provide professional, prompt, and predictable service. What began as an assessment of the HRA in terms of what current resources are being used to deliver its mission, and whether the HRA is meeting all of the department, the development needs for the city of Bloomington, quickly turned to the OHO, where we explored all its complexities, where that work is currently sitting, and where it belongs. We then looked at the Port Authority and their work in South Loop, and what it would mean to supersize their capacity across the entire city landscape, including creative placemaking into the neighborhoods. We then also asked if the city should explore the creation of an EDA. How do we better serve our small businesses through attraction, retention, and expansion? How do we focus on our neighborhood commercial nodes? Tonight, we want to share and discuss with you the recommendations that came out of the assessment of the HRA by an outside consultant and later tweaked by staff. We sincerely believe that what we are proposing aligns with our mission of cultivating an enduring and remarkable community where people want to be. It also aligns with our core values that transformation will come through collective courage and the willingness to take risk. And everyone benefits when there is equitable access to opportunity. So with myself, Carla Henderson, Director of Community Development, I have Erica Coleman, who is our HRA Administrator, Shane Redlang, who is our Port Authority Administrator, and Glenn Markagard, our Planning Manager. And that's our purpose of why we're here today. Erica?
Thank you. So briefly, the HRA was statutorily created and with the purpose to provide a sufficient supply of adequate, safe, and sanitary dwellings in order to protect the health, safety, morals, and welfare of the citizens of Bloomington, to clear and redevelop blighted areas, to perform those duties according to the comprehensive plans, to remedy the shortage of housing for low and moderate income residents, and to redevelop blighted areas in situations in which private enterprise would not act without government participation or subsidies. Next slide. So how did we get here? Well, in November 2020, a new administrator was hired, i.e. me, in the middle of a pandemic. And so during that time, it was made evident that the pandemic has exacerbated the need to focus on housing navigation assistance, people experiencing homelessness and housing instability, and homeowner preservation in addition to rental assistance and creation of housing opportunities. In March 2021, the HRA Board did adopt a strategic plan that aligns with the city's strategic priorities and identifies work along the whole housing continuum with a focus on operational efficiency. The HRA was established 51 years ago, June 14, 1971, to be exact, so we just came on 51 years, to serve the Bloomington community. However, the community has continued to grow in population and diversity. Therefore, an assessment conducted by an outside consultant was needed to determine if the HRA's mission and purpose have shifted over the years, how current resources are being used to deliver its mission, and whether the HRA is meeting all the development needs for the city of Bloomington. The mission of the HRA is to help provide affordable housing opportunities for those who are not adequately served by the marketplace, coordinate the city's efforts to preserve existing neighborhoods, and promote development and redevelopment that enhances Bloomington. In November 2021, Kirsten Chatfield LLC was selected. Kirsten Chatfield, principal, specializes in the facilitation and implementation of commercial, industrial, and mixed-use redevelopment and development projects for public and private organizations. They provide master planning, strategic planning, project management, public finance assistance, and development assessment services for small and large cities. Overall, Kirsten Chatfield LLC has worked with over 50 cities, 10 counties, and 35 private companies to meet their development objectives and specializes in economic development project implementation, tax increment financing, economic development authorities, loan and grant programs, and redevelopment assistance. Kirsten Chatfield herself has 30 years' experience working in and with municipal government in economic development. In May of 2022, the assessment was finalized to address the overall question of, how do we determine if the HRA's mission and purpose have shifted over the years? How current resources are being used to deliver its mission and whether the HRA is meeting all the development needs for the city of Bloomington? Next slide. So during the assessment, data collection was used, and it was done in two different types. Almost 30 documents were examined, interviews were held with the HRA staff, as well as interviews were held with other city divisions and departments to assess how the HRA interacts with them, and interviews were held with the HRA and Port Authority board members to collect a comprehensive approach of information around data collection. Next slide. In the assessment, there were five areas that were yielded for improvement: systems, programs, staffing levels, area of operation, as well as the use of outside consulting services. Next slide. There were key takeaways that were found in the assessment. There is no standard to track program impacts, staff involvement, or returns on investment. BIPOC, Black Indigenous People of Color, and seniors are our fastest-growing populations yet underserved. Homeownership programs are limited in scope. The only focus has been on housing, not commercial nodes and needs. Vacant position of the HRA analysts left a gap in redevelopment and economic development work. The Opportunity Housing Ordinance involves multiple divisions, therefore it is not held in a primary division. Public assistance has been absorbed by the city and HRA and not passed through to development community. There have been missed opportunities for development, and there is a need to review general counsel services for the HRA. Next slide. However, I have mentioned the housing continuum, and I want to show you the whole housing continuum and what that means and how the HRA works along the housing continuum. So as you can see in the pictures here, we have homelessness, which is outside unsheltered, emergency shelter, transitional housing, and community housing. Above that bracket, you'll see a list of programs and policies that, although that list looks very simple, it is very vast and broad. Next, we have affordable rental. Underneath that bracket, you'll see our project-based vouchers, our housing choice vouchers, our assisted rental program, and development subsidy. Again, that sounds very small, but that takes a lot of work over a lot of time and a lot of interaction. Affordable home ownership is next, and you'll see our land trust program, blighted homes program, rental homes for future home buyers, our senior home program, and our nonprofit single-family development. And that is encompassing other programs like MACV, Habitat for Humanity, and PPL, and other places that have developed affordable homeownership options in addition to the land trust program. Next, you have our market value rental. You'll see housing choice vouchers again, and that is because, just because they have a housing choice voucher, does not always mean they go into an affordable development. Sometimes they are in a market rate development, and through that work of a staff in the HRA and the housing choice vouchers, they're able to do that. We also have our fair housing implementation council. And then last, but surely not least, market value homes. And you'll see down payment assistance, our energy loans, our lead-based pain abatement, a brush with kindness, our biennial home fair, and our foreclosure prevention assistance. Again, the HRA works along the whole housing continuum, and that is fully represented here. Next slide. So the assessment recommendations is that the HRA would focus the mission towards the continuum of housing, that very vast continuum, and less on redevelopment of multifamily, whereas the HRA would focus more on housing projects with 20 or less units. This would encompass single-family, townhomes, homeownership opportunities, and then move the majority of multifamily commercial redevelopment and business and/or economic development into the Port Authority. And from here, I'll pass it to Shane Redlang.
Thanks, Carla and Erica. Thanks, Madam Acting Mayor and Council. So I'll talk a little bit about the Port Authority. So again, the assessment and the consultant took a look at the HRA, the Port Authority's powers, and the HRA powers, and came to the same conclusion that our legal staff had come to both internal and external counsel, that there doesn't need to be an EDA as a separate entity for the city to do what it wants to do through commercial node redevelopment, business development, business outreach, small business growth, et cetera. The port was created in 1981. The Port Authority has the same powers as the St. Paul Port Authority and a few extra ones as well. When it carries out the essential functions of government, it carries out those essential functions as of the state, which is a really powerful action. Next slide, please. And, you know, originally, the Port Authority was created to develop marginal property. This is a little bit of an old definition, and the Port Council says the Port Authority statute could use a little bit of cleanup, but as we all know and will get to a little bit later tonight, changing state statute is a little, is a little tricky at times. That said, the Port Authority has broad powers, those of an EDA. Most of the powers of the HRA, the HRA does have a few specific things that the Port Authority doesn't have, but nothing in this assessment would say that we couldn't reach back with the HRA and use those very unique powers for certain housing functions in the future. Next slide, please. So again, the assessment of staff for this, this work would include the port growing to include five FTEs, which it doesn't currently have, three of which would come from the HRA. Those are FTEs that would have titles that are reworked based on, on the needs that we're talking about here tonight. There would be two, we're proposing two new FTEs from where we are at today. Again, you know, this HRA and the port and the city have been doing commercial node redevelopment through the decades, but I think it's this council and other boards' interest to do more commercial redevelopment across the city. In order to do that, you need more people and more money. At this point, we're asking for more people, and those people could help bring more money through grants and other things. One of the long-term vacant positions would be filled, continue the successes of the Opportunity Housing Ordinance. The two new FTEs would work on business development, expansion, and retention activities, and how that Business Development Center at Old FS3, Fire Station 3, would be determined in 2023, whether or not the economy slows down, some of that work may be able to be handled with the five FTEs that we're talking about. If the economy keeps going and the council and HRA and Port Authority decide to continue on with heavy commercial node redevelopment, then it might be determined that we need more people. But that's, that's a decision that the council and the boards can make in the future. And so to fund the work in the Port Authority, we'd decrease the HRA levy by an amount and then increase or turn on the Port Authority levy in that exact same amount. So the impact to taxpayers would be the same. So there would be no increase in taxes for this work. Increase the port levy, turn down the HRA levy in an exact same amount. And then we would take citywide, or creative placemaking citywide. So in a relatively modest amount, $200,000, we've heard the council and other community groups that creative placemaking should be citywide, staff couldn't agree more. We would dedicate $200,000 of those funds to that, to that work. Next slide, please. And so just in, in simple terms, what the Port Authority does right now is focus on development in South Loop, where 65% of Bloomington's projected development exists. We do do commercial and multifamily redevelopment. We do also business development for large business. Those are mostly real estate projects like SIC and Mall of America, big hotel projects and multifamily. For small business, you know, we've got the Open to Business Program, which is, I don't want to say a little bit surprising to me how successful that's been, and the awareness in the business community based on the survey that we did during the pandemic. We got into more small business loans and grants through CARES funding, which the city hadn't previously funded through levy or other funds. And so we kind of got, you know, our feet wet with those during, during the pandemic with CARES, which was helpful to a lot of small businesses and got us an exposure to that group that we didn't have before. Then we had some emerging and evolving items, like a facade program, which is being talked about, doing more small business outreach. And then, of course, the business incubator in the Fire Station 3. And of course, we do the creative placemaking in South Loop as well. But what we're proposing here, the changes are in red. So the development would be citywide, it would focus on commercial nodes, and it would really provide a one-stop shop for subsidized development. The standard non-subsidized development would continue to happen through the planning department, just like it does today. We do more business development, focus on BIPOC businesses, and on the emerging and evolving area of this slide, we would be implementing those programs and doing more small business outreach. And then again, creative placemaking would be brought citywide. So that's really it in a nutshell for the Port Authority's piece of this on one slide. And with that, I'll turn it over to Glenn.
All right. Good evening, Acting Mayor Carter, councilmembers. So I want to talk a little bit about how the assessment recommendations relate specifically to the Opportunity Housing Ordinance. Before you, you see a graph of housing production since 2011. And before the city adopted the Opportunity Housing Ordinance, there were concerns that it may have a negative impact on housing production. As you can see in this graph, it did not. The OHO was adopted in February of 2019, and, you know, those negative impacts did not materialize. In fact, housing production's gone way up since it was adopted. That may be due to various factors. Certainly, the market was great during that timeframe. But recently, we've seen almost as much housing production in one year, in actually the three most recent years that we've seen in decades in the past. So next slide. Specifically, if we look at '21 and '22, Bloomington has had 17 multifamily projects completed under construction or approved, and those projects total well over 2,600 units. I'd note that 11 of the projects include affordable units, and with those projects, Bloomington is over 77% of the way to its 2030 affordable housing goals, which are assigned by the Metropolitan Council. Now, looking at the various income bands, the 60% band, there were well over the 2030 goal, and the 50% band, we've made very good progress. And then the 30% band is where we have the most work to do. That is the most difficult band to address. Next slide. So there are significant staff support that goes into the Opportunity Housing Ordinance. Duties range from negotiation to financial analysis, reporting, monitoring. And these duties cross many divisions, many departments. So the divisions here tonight, obviously, planning, HRA, Port Authority, but also the legal department, the finance department, play a very big role in the Opportunity legal department, the finance department play a very big role in the opportunity housing ordinance. And next slide. Unfortunately, we have an existing position in place that would specifically work on this project that's currently vacant. But the assessment recommends filling the position and then allocating the position, the time spent among various divisions. So that includes 50% of time within the Port Authority, 30% in planning, and then 20% within the HRA. So this time, I'll turn it back to Ms. Henderson.
Thank you. So again, next slide, please. We just want to recap what we are, want to discuss this evening. Really want the bodies of the HRA and the Port Authority to do what they do best. I know at our council retreat, you heard the story of the 92-year-old, we have a story of a 21-year, I mean, really wanting the HRA to focus on people and programs and not the bricks and mortar. It's clear the Port Authority definitely has done an excellent job in South Loop and really wanting to supersize that by moving the majority of our multifamily and commercial redevelopment to the port. The OHO position that Glenn talked about is included in those five FTEs. Like Shane mentioned, three of those are currently vacant that are sitting in the HRA. We have not filled those. So really, we're talking about two FTEs. Again, some of the numbers that we've started to look at, to put those five FTEs into an import levy, fully funded in terms of IT and benefits, it's about $600,000. Adding another $200,000 for creative place making comes to $800,000. Right now, the HRA Development Fund levy is about one, it's over 1.6 million net allocated annually. So we have this very complicated spreadsheet, working with Lori Conami Scholler and her team and our accountant, Mary Lee, where we said, okay, if we took, let's say, 1.4 million next year, that would pay for the five FTEs, the $200,000, giving some leeway also for facade improvement or, you know, displacement funds. That would leave $200,000 in the HRA Development Fund, but they have a healthy fund balance. So it will be, the fund will be able to sustain all the payments that they need to make, their obligations, future obligations for quite some time. So those are kind of some of the numbers that we're looking at. And I think the next slide talks about what we're looking to do. We have not taken this to the HRA Board or the Port Authority Board, wanting to take it to this honor body first, based on some past practices that our city manager can speak to better than I can about service assessments. And that concludes our presentation.
Thank you to each of you. Mr. City Manager, did you have a comment that you wanted to make?
Uh, Mr., Mr., there we go again. Acting Mayor and council members, man, exercise that new muscle. As our Community Development Director suggested, this is, first of all, this is a continuation of a long-running practice that we have over the past five, six years now of doing service assessments. And I'm glad that Erica mentioned how long the HRA has been in existence here, 51 years, with not much, not much effort or time spent considering either impact or how we approach the work to make sure that it continues to be relevant today in the same way that it was 51 years ago. That's the same approach that we've used for all the other service assessments that we've done over the last five or six years, is making sure that we are going back and looking at the programs and services that we deliver and continue to ask that question of, is this doing the right what? And making sure that it is still meeting the objectives that the council has as a policy body, that staff has as a service provider. And so the HRA assessment is in keeping with the practice that we have done over those last few years. This is a project that's owned by the city council because ultimately you're deciding on the allocation of resources. The council has a service agreement with both the Port Authority and the HRA to provide staff resources to make sure that those missions are carried out. Our feeling was it was appropriate to bring it here first. And I understand that that has been not necessarily universally agreed upon by some of the other stakeholders in the conversation, and I certainly respect their opinion on that. Don't argue their perspective at all, just following in what we've done before. So having said all that, I really want to thank the staff. They've done a superb job working with our consultant to do this evaluation. This is really complicated and complex material when you're talking about the millions of dollars at stake and even more than that, talking about the impact that the operations in the HRA and the Port Authority and the Planning Division have on this community, both in the, in the current day and in decades in the future. This is, this is really important conversation, so I want to acknowledge their work too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rebergi. So I guess I will just make a quick comment, and I have several questions, but I'll only ask one, because I know that there are probably many questions written down up here waiting to be asked. And so I guess first, just yes, I really appreciate in general that this assessment was done. I think there's been frustration for many years that we don't have the same level of economic development across the city that we have in South Loop. And I serve on the Port Authority. I am very excited and proud of the work that's happening in South Loop. It's exciting, it's needed, and really, really excited by the opportunity to really get some momentum behind the neighborhood redevelopment that we know people in Bloomington really want to see. So one quick question that I have, it was mentioned that, you know, the Port Authority has in many ways greater power than the HRA does, but that the HRA does have some unique powers. And so I guess I'm just curious, are there, with this new approach, if we take this approach, are there any risks or any potential losses that we should be considering before we kind of really move forward with approving this decision?
Thank you, Acting Mayor, council members. So, you know, the devil's in the details a little bit. As far as powers go, like the one unique power that the HRA has that the port doesn't have is that they can be a member of an LLC for a particular housing project, right? But again, you know, this is the first time that the bodies are seeing this, and I imagine we'll take the comments that we get from y'all tonight, comments we get from the Port Authority and comments we get from the HRA. And in the end, perhaps, you know, we even had the conversation today, you know, do the HRA and Port Authority meet quarterly in a joint session? We don't typically do that. Certainly, we wouldn't want to throw away that power that the HRA has. There may be a use for it, and I don't think what we're saying tonight is that, you know, the HRA wouldn't be involved and use that tool. It's just that for the majority of the business stuff and the larger multifamily mixed-use developments, the Port Authority would be doing that. The board's experienced in that. And so, yeah, that's, I don't think there are any risks, because I don't think we're really giving up anything, certainly not statutorily. We're just shifting around which functions and what departments are going to do that work, which boards are going to see most of those developments come through.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I would just add to that, Acting Mayor, that what we're proposing here is actually just working better together. And so, no, there's not at this moment foreseen risk, because we're proposing working better together and pulling on our strengths and being more collaborative. Whereas we are separate entities, we are one Bloomington. And so we want to work like that.
Thank you. Questions? Councilmember Martin and then Coulter.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a few of them here. I'll just start with one or two and then send it to one of my colleagues. I know in the HRA assessment, there was a lot of recurring themes in the staff feedback, kind of about the state of affairs generally, saying there was some confusion about kind of their input or broader strategic direction, mentioned how they were stretched thin. And I love, a lot of this kind of speaks directly to that. But with regard to the structure of this discussion itself, I'm wondering, so if we, if we say, let's, let's move forward with these recommendations and then it is presented to both the port and the HRA, well, at that point, we've already pulled the trigger on saying, let's move forward. So that ship has kind of sailed a little bit. So then, is staff and the HRA Board's feedback, what does that look like when it comes back to us? Because there's, some of them are saying we're not being heard, and I just want to make sure they're being heard.
Absolutely. Thank you, Acting Mayor, council members. Thank you for the question. So staff was actually presented this information prior to. Staff will have continued conversations. But I do want to add that, again, the HRA is 51 years old, and I have great staff that have been here with institutional knowledge for 20 years, longer than 20 years. The HRA is on paper. The city has moved forward and done things and updated technology, but the HRA has not. And so one of the conversations and discussions and action steps that is happening with staff is how can we look at the work that staff is doing primarily in rehab and Section 8? That is where staff's focus is primarily situated. How can we look at that work and look where we can, again, work better together? Accounting, legal, there's different things that we are doing that is duplicative in the HRA, which is causing a strain on staff, but also, as we are growing with the new units that Mr. Markergard showed you, there's been an increase in the work of housing assistance and really working with people. And my, I would have to just say that my staff truly have a heart for people and really spend a lot of time, not just work, but there's an emotional pull that happens with my staff when they are working with people to meet their needs and maintain their housing here in Bloomington, as well as those that are moving to Bloomington. So it's a both and. While we are going through this process and we are learning and engaging, staff is being asked and included. But I do want to highlight that at the point of the assessment and the interviews, we were returning from a pandemic where when we did go to being remote prior to me starting, HRA did not even have laptops. They were 100% on desktops. So it's a lot. And so I just want to highlight that, highlight just the evolution and that we are in it together. And I'll continue to work with the staff, listen to staff and respond to staff, because there's a difference between being heard and being listened to.
If I could, Acting Mayor, council members, councilmember Martin, I think it's important that some of the things that Erica has done that happened, were in place, were going on while the assessment was going on, maybe we can talk a little bit about the building inspection permit. Because right now, the rehab loans happen, we send an employee out, they do the scope, the contractor goes out, goes, comes to us, pulls a permit, does the job, and then we send a building inspector out, and then the HRA staff member was going out. And so we started to see some duplicate efforts. And I know some change is hard, but it just doesn't make sense to send two vehicles to the same address to check on the same work when the building inspector actually has to physically close out that permit. And so we implemented with our building inspection staff what we call an HRA permit. So I know it may, on the surface, for somebody who's been doing that work for 25 years, say, wow, you know, I don't want to give up that drive going to see, you know, that new siding put on that house. But again, we want to be efficient and with the resources that we have. So I don't know if you want to add anything, Erica?
Yes. Thank you, Carla. There have been changes made during that. So one of the things while this assessment was actually beginning, the rehab program had just come back online. Inspections were taken from six staff, all doing inspections, also trying to figure out paperwork, to two dedicated staff and depending on our building inspections division. So there were things that could be made, changes that could be made for improvement while I came in listening to staff, where they did say, we're stretched thin. And I'm like, what's going on? Tell me what your work is, what can I take off your plate? How can I figure this out? Again, I've talked with staff and one of the things is, well, we didn't see the whole picture. So that was me coming back and saying, oh, I can improve my communication style. Better yet, say, here's the high-level vision, but I want you to help me get there. And so those are the things that have happened while this was going on.
Thank you. That's, I appreciate the clarification. I'll leave it at that, Mayor.
Okay. And I do just want to clarify before we move on, I think, to Councilmember Coulter. So the motion in front of us is to support and continue to explore the recommendations above and present these recommendations to the HRA and Port Authority. So can you just talk more about like what that really means? Like, are we approving, officially approving anything? Or are we just saying, hey, like in general, we are very supportive, continue the conversations, but then we know there are going to be other decision points ahead of us? Can you just talk about that?
Sure. Acting Mayor, council members, Madam Acting Mayor Carter. So yes, what we're looking for tonight is basically, we like the idea, we want you to go to the other stakeholders that are, would be affected by this, have the conversation. We have baked in enough time that we could put this, if the green light goes, as part of our budget process. And so that, that would be when we would be bringing it back before the honorable body, correct, City Manager? Okay.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. And it's a mouthful. I haven't even said it out loud yet, and I'm kind of afraid to, so. All right. Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you. Just, so I have a number of questions here and I have some comments that I think I will save until later, but that, that last clarification, by the way, that was, that was really, really helpful for me. Just, just sort of be sort of clear about this, and I, it's maybe just be, maybe just because the language isn't in here, excuse me, just to be clear, I do not have COVID. I just have young kids who are sick all the time, because young kids are sick all the time. I, but just to be clear, staff, you do support these recommendations. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes.
Okay.
We would not bring anything before you that we did not.
A recommended motion or something like that. So I just wanted to, to make sure that I was understanding that correctly. So, and maybe this is a question for Erica specifically, but the, this concept of the HRA focusing on people versus structures, basically, is what I heard. Could you expand on that a little bit? I'd just like to know a little bit more about what that means and specifically what, how that affects work that will be done by HRA staff as well as the HRA Board?
Absolutely. Thank you, Acting Mayor and Councilmember Coulter and councilmembers. So one, I want to say that the current structure of the HRA involves six program specialists, one program manager, one HRA administrator, one office support specialist and one office assistant, and one HRA analyst. Out of all of those positions, three of them are vacant. One of them is working on development, the HRA administrator. The six program specialists are working on rental assistance, rehab programs, homebuyer programs, inspections. And so the proposed here is that we would not actually impact the direct work of the program specialists that are working on development, because they're not working on development. However, the program specialists, we do have, are working on blighted homes and single-family homes. That's where they help out and where they really prioritize that. So when we say that we are focused on, focusing more on people rather than brick and mortar, mortar, excuse me, it takes a lot to get a multifamily development going, especially affordable multifamily that requires development. Nothing against that, it just, if it was market rate, they can come up with no problem. When it is on the administrator and/or one other position in the HRA, we have leaned to consultants. Prior to, previously, we had the Economic Development Analyst part-time with the HRA, which was a major help because of the ability to do financial analysis. And when we switched from that because of the growth and the work in multifamily development in the South Loop in particular, we had to lean more on consultants to really do that work. And so the way that this is designed would be that we would look at at more of the program specialists doing what they do best, working with the community, working with people. They're already out there doing that. They're not really working with developers. However, we would look at how we could streamline that work and increase their ability to do more of our service, direct services. For instance, we have the Rental Homes for Future Home Buyers Program. Staff actually does the property management and oversees the property maintenance. By simply being able to outsource that and look at something different, they can work better with the tenants and/or the renters that are in those units for a higher success rate of homeownership. So when I say focus more on the people, please do not get me wrong, constructing multifamily affordable housing is focusing on the people, but it's a long-term approach. When people need housing now, when they need resources now, when they are calling now, those are the strengths of my staff, and that's the strength that I want to play up in the HRA.
Thank you. That's a really helpful explanation. If I could, just a few more quick questions here. So the, excuse me, the proposals that the HRA would focus on housing projects with 20 or fewer units, where did that 20 number come from?
Absolutely. Thank you for the question. So I pulled on my background. Side note, when I was in the city of Minneapolis, I literally had to do this exact thing. And we had to look at what the priorities were and what was that missing middle housing. Missing middle housing is usually 20 units or less, sometimes 40 units or less. And so that number, 20, please do not get caught on it. It might need to be tweaked, but it's more of a focus on single-family or, single-family detached, single-family attached, as well as townhomes. Where is that sweet spot for looking at rental, affordable rental, and affordable homeownership in Bloomington? And so that's where that number came from.
Thank you. That's helpful to know. Because my, part of my concern was how that jives with the concept of this continuum of housing. So it's good to know that it's not so much the exact figure as it is the types of housing. So thank you. That's really, really helpful. And then you sort of just spoke to this now, but I'd be curious to know how, excuse me, how this proposal compares to other, the way other local HRAs operate, at least within the state of Minnesota. Is this, I mean, is this kind of, for lack of a better phrase, getting us closer to best practice, or is this sort of charting a different territory or somewhere in between? What does that look like?
Thank you. So we are in a unique position, being that we are Bloomington. And I'm going to tell you my elevator speech that I gave the City Manager and a few hundred, 100 of my colleagues earlier this, last week. We are the fourth-largest city in the state. We are the third-largest city in the Twin Cities Metro. We are the second-largest city in Hennepin County, the largest county in the state, and we are the largest suburb. There are no other HRAs that compare to us. The other HRAs do not have the level of vouchers that we have that would be comparable. The next size HRA to us would either be Plymouth, which is small, St. Louis Park in Plymouth, or Met Council. And so we are in a very unique position because that we do offer the assistance, we do offer our rehab loans that we do not outsource, and we do offer other opportunities for homeownership and blighted homes redevelopment. So to say all that, to say that if we were to compare to another public housing authority, it would be Minneapolis, and they don't do what we do. And so this is us setting the tone, and this is us being the leader as the largest suburb in the state for all the other HRAs like Plymouth and St. Louis Park that are looking to us.
Thank you. And then just one last question, I promise. Well, probably not my last question. Let's be honest with ourselves here. I always say that, and it never ends up being the case. So I should just be honest with myself. One of the concerns I have about shifting more economic development to the Port Authority is, I mean, partly, frankly, from the statutory language around HRAs. And if you could just speak to, I mean, it specifically calls up that, one of the purposes of HRAs, you mentioned, is to clear and redevelop blighted areas. And then there's another piece, redevelop blighted areas in situations in which private enterprise would not act without government participation. So I guess, if you could speak to sort of how the HRA intends to ensure that it's fulfilling the statutory requirement related to that redevelopment piece, while also sort of shifting much of that discussion to the Port Authority, I think that'd be helpful.
Absolutely. Thank you. So I'll start, and then I'll send it to Shane. So when I read this, to redevelop blighted areas, it's dilapidated. You know the definition of blight. It doesn't necessarily mean it has to be economic. It doesn't have to be a commercial property. A blighted area can be a residential property. So I don't actually read this and think that we're only allowed to do economic development or housing. I read this as we can still do housing in blighted areas, and we would not change, like, our blighted homes program, where the HRA is able to purchase property that is privately owned, and it's usually residential. We remove the blight, therefore, we are raising and removing or allowing for the home to be rehabilitated, and then creating opportunities for homeownership. That function does not go away. But the port has superpowers. And so Shane, would you like to speak to your superpowers?
Thank you, Erica. Thank you, Acting Mayor, council members, and Councilmember Coulter. So again, the port and HRA have really a lot of overlapping powers. And so the mission of the Port Authority is stated a little bit differently in the statute than the HRA, but the power overlap is, there's a lot of overlapping. There's a few powers, again, that the port has that the HRA doesn't, and this one that I could find that the HRA has that the port doesn't. That doesn't mean that we couldn't use it. So I see, you know, the HRA fulfilling its statutory powers with all of the things that they're doing on the continuum of housing. But certainly, they don't need to do the blight removal if another agency in the city is doing it. So to me, they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. The port is going to be doing what they're supposed to be doing. Again, this is a Venn diagram. We talked about actually creating a Venn diagram slide. Now, it makes me wish that we would have done that. But we didn't, sorry. So, yeah, I think that's the answer. Again, the Port Authority statute is a bit messy. Ideally, that gets cleaned up at some point, but.
Thank you.
I will say that I was talking to Jamie earlier, and I mentioned it would be helpful to have a Venn diagram. Councilmember DeLisandro.
Plus one for Venn diagrams. Thank you all for your time tonight. Really appreciate this. I can tell you, a lot of work has gone into this, and I appreciate the diligence and the focus that you have on our residents. So thank you. A question for you about the continuum that you have in your slides. What of those programs needs to be either eliminated or moved or adjusted dramatically or anything as a result of the recommendations that you have?
Thank you. It would potentially be development subsidy, because development subsidy encompasses so much. That's not just single-family homes. That is also multifamily. But again, that is a decision for the city to make, because the tax increment financing that the HRA actually does is allocated to the city, and 5% is split to the HRA, 5% to the port, 5% to the city. So out of everything, development subsidy possibly, but I think we would still have a role to play in that.
Okay. So there's no expectation that any of these programs would need to stop as a result of the change in resources or anything like that?
Not at all.
Okay. And the funding associated with them?
The funding with them is not, excuse me, homelessness response and prevention services is American Rescue Plan Act dollars currently, and down payment assistance is American Rescue Plan Act dollars currently. So let me call that out. Everything else, there is not a proposal to change the funding, and the funding is sufficient outside of the development fund of the HRA.
Okay. And I don't know if this is maybe a better question for the City Manager as opposed to you folks, but there's an implication in the deck here that the Opportunity Housing Ordinance was passed by us but not resourced by us, as it is now looking for a home? Is that my, is that a correct assessment of what happened? And if so, is the recommendation here that, to give it a home, and that home should be the Port Authority, if I'm understanding this correctly?
Acting Mayor Carter and Councilmember DeLisandro, I think that's a pretty accurate understanding. So we relied on the TIF authority of the HRA to be the leverage for the other dollars that came in for OHO. And, you know, the where the resources come from are getting a little bit more clearer as we go. This will provide more clarity to it. I don't look at that as a deficiency in terms of how the Opportunity Housing Ordinance was set up, but it is a factor here.
Okay. That's helpful. And is the function of that 50, 30, 20 split across the, I think, the port, the planning department and the HRA, was that a, is that a function of the fact that we did most of the development in the South Loop? Like, is it, I don't want to use that number as a, oh, that's how it should be split, because that's how it happened over the last couple of years, when, of course, it did, because it was South Loop, and that's where the port works. So how do we leverage that information against, like, what would have happened if we'd been doing this citywide from the beginning?
Assistant City Manager Sable, can you go to the slide that had the OHO coordination duties? It's towards the end. This is how that was brought forward. So one, 50% is looking at where would that need to be the face? Where would that need to talk to developers and bring them in? The previous position that was filled as the HRA analyst, that was the face of the Opportunity Housing Ordinance. And so one of the things is, if we are moving forward and have support to continue exploring, the Port Authority primarily taking on the multifamily, the lead of multifamily development, then the OHO face, that position, would need to spend more time there. The 30% for the Planning Division was due to the entitlements and the work that comes with the ordinance, because it's an ordinance, that is a code. And then the 20% with the HRA comes through on the affordable units and the coordination with the program specialists that are doing Section 8. Because when the Opportunity Housing Ordinance was passed, at that point, there was not much conversation with the Section 8 staff about how their work could potentially increase. And what we have seen, looking back, is it has skyrocketed, because when people port in, so when they have a voucher from another community, we aren't turning them away. So the staff still has that work to do on top of the people that are already here and that are receiving our vouchers. And so that's where the 20% in that coordination, having those meetings with the management staff, different coordination of pieces like that, in that end result of still achieving the affordable housing units in Bloomington. That is where the proposal of this breakdown of time allocation came from.
Thank you. One quick final question. Is there a corresponding service assessment being done on the Port Authority right now?
Acting Mayor, Councilmember DeLisandro, there is not. We had, we didn't necessarily say that the Port Authority was part of the assessment here. We were wrapping the role that the Port Authority and planning plays in the work that the HRA does as part of the assessment, but we did not say we're specifically doing an assessment of the port.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. I got a couple of questions. Could you clarify, there was a statement that this wouldn't increase the levy, but it would just shift it from HRA to the port. But can you explain to me how we can add two FTEs and $200,000 and not increase the levy?
You can budget.
All right. Thank you, Acting Mayor and Councilmember Nelson, council members. So by taking the three vacant positions in the HRA and moving those three vacant positions to the Port Authority to assign that work, one, that's moving that funding that would have been paid out of the, adjusted for within the HRA levy, it's lowering that amount to move with those positions. Then the two additional positions, it's looking at that levy, again, with the HRA and saying, oh, the two additional positions, what's salary and benefits, what's the needs, moving that amount, and then the $200,000 on top of that. So it is lowering the HRA levy by an amount and turning the Port Authority levy on commensurate to that amount. That is a net zero change at this time to taxpayers, because the HRA levy is at the max.
If I could, Acting Mayor Carter, Councilmember, Councilmember Nelson, Erica hinted at this about the consultants. So right now, professional services and consultants for the development fund, what's budgeted for this year is $750,000. We have relied very heavily on outside counsel, you know, lots of duplicate services that are being provided. So we believe that that's where we will get additional resources to bring on permanent staff that can do the work that are here every day with us. So I wanted to add that.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. That makes sense. The 20-unit threshold, do we have any idea how many projects would have been under that 20 units? I mean, I could think of one. That I shouldn't mention.
Sure. Acting Member Carter, Councilmember Nelson, yes, there was definitely one. Penn, Penn and 86th is an example. Question is, how far do you go? We have a lot of two-family homes, individual two-family homes. So those numbers kind of add up. One case where we had three units in a subdivision recently. So quite a bit of that, but we've just had the one townhome project recently.
Okay. Next question. Did a great job of talking about how this would work for the staff. What about our boards? You know, what would the role of the HRA board be now? What would the role of the port board be? How would that be impacted by this?
I can answer that. Acting Mayor, Councilmembers, Councilmember Nelson. So for the Port Authority, I don't think it changes much. They just see more projects, right? They're, you know, a large part of what the Port Authority already does is deal with development projects, and that just gets, you know, more, right? Maybe I'll let Erica talk about the HRA board.
Thank you. So I would look at, as of right now, the role of the HRA board would be to weigh in and provide input in line with the mission. And the mission is still to help create those units for low and moderate income. They would still have a role to play in advising around housing and the creation of housing in the city of Bloomington as the Housing and Redevelopment Authority in and for the city of Bloomington. It would not be something that is surpassed. The board would not be surpassed. Their input is still very valuable, and that is the expertise that they have to provide that information.
For clarification from me, what is their role currently in reviewing development applications?
Thank you. Currently, they do not review development applications. That is at the staff level in reviewing development proposals that start with planning and then come to the HRA if there is an ask for subsidy. And so at this point, unless it is land that the HRA owns, the HRA board is approving the use of subsidy.
Okay. And then what does the port weighs in on more development projects? From my experience, is that accurate? So that is something that... From my experience, is that accurate? So that is something they're used to doing at the board level, not just the staff level?
Certainly. Acting Mayor, Councilmembers, Councilmember Nelson. Yeah, so the, you know, all of the port, what we do now slide and then what we would do more in the future, they would just have more action to take on all those things. Again, they of course act on development projects. They have involvement with the Open to Business Program. They were involved along with the City Council and the CARES funding and, and that. But there are a number of new programs that the port would start to become more involved in. Again, the facade program, more small, small business outreach. And then there's the Fire Station 3 project, the Business Incubator. How that would be staffed and managed and funded is still TBD at this point. It's still a project that's being developed. But, so yeah, so the, the port just has, it's not exactly what they're doing today, but it's a lot of the same and similar things that, that they have been doing. And so they just have more agenda items.
Okay. My last question just regards, and I think you touched on a little bit here, Shane, is the business development, because that was originally my interest heavily in this, is what can we do more to, to help people start a business, grow their business here? And so I know that we're doing those things. Can you talk to me a little bit about, you know, is that all kind of future decisions about staffing or how is that playing out in this proposal? How will we make sure we can accomplish those goals?
Thank you. Acting Mayor, Councilmembers, Councilmember Nelson. So, you know, we played around with the org charts a bit, but again, we wanted to see what the council thought about the idea first. But, you know, if, if this all plays out how we've been talking about it, there would certainly be a, you know, a number of staff in the Port Authority that would be real estate focused and kind of big business, kind of the existing functions that the Port Authority is already doing, or doing the most of. And then there would be another, another wing that would work on the business development items, all the kind of other things that are small business related. Again, the facade, Business Resource Center, small business outreach, that type of thing. So directly to your point, there would be a group of people focusing more on that. Of course, with the economy and different initiatives coming through, they would flex back and forth as, you know, the need arises. But that's, there would be staff initially certainly dedicated directly to that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Loman?
Well, certainly I have some questions with Mayor. I'm sure I said, you said you had a couple of questions. Okay, all right. Want to just give you a chance to get in there if you want to. So just a comment and then I've got, you know, like 20 other questions. No, I only got three and a half questions. So, so certainly when we look at this, I get very excited. You know, eight years ago or so ago, a number of us, new councilmembers wanted to see something done around business nodes and redevelopment. And so when I saw that, I got really excited when I saw that. And it's just proof that shows you got to stay around a long time sometimes to get things changed. And so I guess I, I make that statement in, in that I'm less now concerned in terms of structure, but much more interested in results. I, I just trust that staff can, 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 can put together the type of structure that's necessary to try to achieve the goals that the, the council has put forward. And so that's sort of the, the, you know, what I would say. And so my question would be, do you believe this gets you the best results from that? But that's more of a comment than I have anything else. Next on my list, I too share what Councilmember Nelson, when I heard $200,000 for creative make, place making, another goal eight years ago that we wanted to see happen, that I saw on this, I got excited about it. But then I also said to myself, well, how do you come up with $200,000? And I guess my question is more so from a long-term perspective. I know that there are dollars that are within HRA that are revolving and there's, in a sense, a nest egg there based on loans that we have out there. But when we look, when we go out past that, that nest egg, if we burn that up, I, I just, I, I just, I don't know if I believe, maybe I just need to be shown this, but I know I heard, you know, $750,000, $750,000 of, of contract work and duplicative work out there. I mean, I just, I, I find that concerning that we had that much just kind of slushing around out there. And maybe that's, maybe that's the wrong way, way to look at it. But if we're spending that amount of money external, I've got some other questions in terms of, of when we talk about the levy and that kind of thing. So, so I, I just think there needs to be more of a conversation around that and, and how long-term are those dollars that we're securing? I know some cities put that into their, you know, when you make your, your development agreements or your park dedications, you, you have that for your creative place making. And so I just, you know, if, if we're doing this $200,000 for creative place making, is it a, you know, a few years that we're looking to try to do this? Or is this really a long-term strategy that we're looking at? So I guess I'll leave it there as, as my question.
Acting Mayor Carter, Councilmembers, Councilmember Loman, it is a long-term strategy. Right now, we are levy, levy, the levy that goes into the Development Fund for the HRA is over $1.6 million. And we haven't been producing much development with that fund.
So when you say that, as a taxpayer, when I, when I'm hearing that, we have money just sitting around that just?
No.
Help me understand that. Because I mean, I know what you're saying, but I'm just, I'm hearing my resident right now saying.
We get proposals, we get developments. We don't have internal staff to vet, should this development go forward for a TIF district. So we defer to outside consultants to do a lot of that work. The most recent one was, was 8,200 Humboldt? Was that the most recent one that we got? And we needed an outside agency to help us vet that. We couldn't use the port staff because they're, they can't do work outside of South Loop. So it really ties our hands sometimes to get that project before you over the finish line now that blighted building's coming down and now we're going to have, you know, a nice building there.
Yes.
Erica, do you want to add anything else about?
No, that covered it.
Okay.
So in others' words, what I'm hearing you say, if we expand the charter of the, of the port, who already has that staff there that are not working on these items right now, this work now can be handled in-house, saving that $200,000. But now I'm hearing another $500,000 out of money that we could save taxpayers money. So I'm just, I'm a little bit confused when I hear that. I mean, it totally makes sense to me, but sort of not.
I, I understand. One of the things I will say is when we started talking about what this would mean. So Port Authority has staff right now that are dedicated to the South Loop. And Shane used the example of when he was in engineering, that when he worked on projects, he would charge his time to certain, so this pot of money that would be coming from basically the HRA, where we would be turning down the HRA levy and turning on a port levy, staff then could, if they were working on developments or projects outside of South Loop, charge their time to that kind of like pot of money, that, that resource, so that they're not in violation of any of the funding that the South Loop currently gets. And I don't know if you want to add anything else, but that's, that's basically what that allows us to do.
No, I think, I, I think that a resident would hear that and, and would understand that. I, I understand it. I mean, I get it. I'm just playing dumb now. But, but I, I do think that if you're not used to handling these things on an ongoing basis, there is a confusion when you hear that, oh, all of a sudden now there's magically $200,000. What? So I do appreciate you spending more time. And I think we're going to need to continue to have that conversation about that so that folks are clear as they hear that. Moving on. So I, I like that continuum of service piece that's up there. I think that's probably one of the clearest things I've ever seen since I've been on council. I really do like that. Maybe a Venn diagram would be even better, but I'll wait till I, I'll wait till I see that. When we look at those continuums of service right now, how much money as a percentage is being spent, you know, right now? I don't need precision, but you know, if we look at each one of those areas, how much were we spending on that? And then kind of my follow-up question, my point five question is, what is the goal or the recommendation from staff going forward in each one of those areas with this new proposal?
Thank you, Acting Mayor Carter, Councilmember Loman, councilmembers. So one, what's not highlighted on the continuum is that the funding is Section 8, CDBG as a mutual services agreement through, with the HRA and the city, as well as rehab loans. So I want to highlight that because the Section 8 program in particular has funding from HUD for vouchers and admin. So that is a program that has predominantly been self-sustaining. There is maybe $100,000 of the levy every year that goes in to help the admin of that program. CDBG, that is the CDBG Rehab Loan, the Fair Housing Implementation Council, West Hennepin Affordable Housing Land Trust, as well as admin. So there's admin from the CDBG that is also paying for staff salaries and benefits to do that work. And then there is the loan, rehab loan fund. And the reason I call that out is because it's known as the Neighborhood Loan Fund, where in years prior, strategic priorities funding has gone into that from the City Council to allow for better opportunities to serve homeowners with a repayable loan. So what's also in that account is the interest and the repayments that are coming in from years of doing those loans.
I appreciate, I appreciate the, you know, the going through each one of the, the dollar amounts of the piece. So let me, let me ask it this way to make it a little more clear. And I know we're, we're moving on time here, so I'll, I'll, I'll wrap this up. I just have one other question after this. To maybe be a little more illustrative. So for example, I see homeownership in that, middle of that continuum. And then we've got, you know, rental pieces there. So if we had 100%, you know, across that continuum, which I know there's, there are items that are outside of that, that continuum that are there. So it wouldn't equal 100%. Let's just take homeownership. So right now today, how much money would you save as a percentage of the dollars that are spent in this continuum are spent on homeownership? And so if it's, let's say it's 1% today, and let's say five years from now, when we kind of move to this joint port, HRA thing, goal, staff comes up with a recommendation of maybe we're going to move to 5%. That's, that's sort of the question I'm, I'm kind of asking. So really what, the, the heart of my question is, from a process standpoint, is what we have right now, are we planning on, you know, changing these percentages to, to try to achieve a, a different policy goal? And that's part of the rationale of making this reorganization? Or no, we plan on spending the exact same amount of money, but, you know, getting more benefit from that, from that expenditure?
Thank you for clarifying that. It is the latter. We are not looking at changing these amounts. I do want to add that homeownership, just because I'm in housing, I'm probably a housing nerd. This continuum includes the creation and the preservation of homeownership. And so when you say homeownership, I'm thinking, oh yeah, we're creating new homes, rental homes for future homebuyers, land trusts, but foreclosure prevention assistance. So when we say homeownership, I'm looking at the whole thing. And so to answer your question, we are not proposing changing the amounts for these dedicated activities.
And I appreciate that. And I think that helps me to understand it. And I think that what I would, my comment back then to staff would be that I'd like to see some changes, you know, in terms of that, you know, the percentages, I think, that we have as, as from a taxpayer standpoint, we invest a lot of money in temporary housing over time because those, the, when we do affordable housing and a rental type situation, those dollars are, are not permanent in a sense. They, they kind of go away. And so I just would hope that we would, would, would look to try to shift that balance from that of the dollars in which that we spent on, on rental properties and try to move that towards the ownership piece of the pie. So now that I understand that that's what the plan is, I want to let you know, this council member would like to see more dollars of, as a percentage of this continuum spent on, you know, on, on, on homeownership. And then finally, and I, I'll make this more as a comment so we can, we can move forward. And I, I trust that this has happened, but, you know, we talked about the two demographics that are growing most, BIPOCs and seniors. And when we look at the composition of those folks who were consulted through this policy procedure, I'm not sure that I, I saw that makeup. And maybe I just missed that. And we could talk about that offline. But I just want to make sure as we move forward with this, this proposal, that we are continuing to make sure that both the BIPOC and seniors, as you've identified as being the, the two largest segments in the population are, are being considered as we, as we look to, to both support this moving forward, both those, those groups or by, by getting assistance from other, other groups that are there that can help with that. Thank you.
Okay, so I do want to try to move us along. If there are any last burning questions. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. It's not really a question, it's more of a comment. I'm going to be honest, I'm a little unsettled on this proposal. I appreciate the work and diligence that's gone into it. One of my concerns, and this is maybe more for the city manager, is along the lines of how the individuals on these boards are selected. The HRA is selected by us as the entire council in a very public process. And the port is selected by appointment by the mayor. And so this gives significant change of power in my mind to, to the mayor, is my understanding.
I think the clarifying point is the HRA also by appointment?
Yes.
I thought it was.
Yeah.
Well, so I'm wrong.
Yeah.
Then I'm not concerned anymore. Okay.
There's a lot to keep track of.
Yeah.
Yeah, everything.
May I ask a clarifying question?
Councilmember DeLisandro.
Excuse me, Acting Mayor. I just want to make sure, what is the next step here? Are we all going to just make our final comments and move on? Because I have comments, but I, I held those back.
So we can have comments. I also want to just remind everybody that this is not the last time we're going to see this. We're going to have this come back in front of us again after it goes to the port and the HRA. It'll also be back in front of us during the budget discussions because there obviously are budget implications here. And so I just give that as the broader next steps to inform however you want to set up your comments or whatever. But.
Okay. Well, if it pleases the court, I, I do have, I have two, that was for, for you, Melissa. I have two. I just had two recommendations for them to consider. Would that be appropriate?
Yes. I was going to make one quick comment. The one thing that I did have a question about, but we don't, I don't need an answer now, but I think it would be good to build into the presentation is just what will happen to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund? How does that fit into kind of the big picture? Again, I don't need an answer right now, but just to have it along with the Venn diagram in the chair. Okay, Councilmember DeLisandro.
I appreciate you. Thank you, Acting Mayor. I actually had also a recommendation that they tell us what happens to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, so thank you for that. The other thing I was going to say is you might want to, I, I, I would hate for us to make this change and for us to not have done or at least planned to do a service assessment of the Port Authority itself. So I would recommend that you plan for that because moving a bunch of, of stuff into something that we haven't done an assessment on doesn't seem to make sense to me. So soon after that, I want to make sure we're right-sided in terms of the way that that place works. That would be a recommendation. And then the third one I had, a recommendation was related to Councilmember Nelson. It seems to me that if we're going to expand the authority of the port, we need to expand the port authority's representation. And so a consideration of adding more residents to that board seems to make sense to me. So I would like to see some thought about that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to, to clarify, Councilmember Nelson, we used to do it that way with the HRA. And then I think we realized we were doing it incorrectly. And so that was, yes, because we did use to vote on HRA members. And then I think we realized that the mayor does technically appoint them and we confirm them maybe? Yes, I believe so. So, yeah, so you were, you were not, you were not wrong. It's just that we were all making a mistake at one point. So I, just by way of comments, I came in honestly, I came on, came in and very unsure of how I wanted to vote on this motion because the word support gave me a little bit of heartburn, if I'm completely honest. I was not sure that I was comfortable supporting these specific recommendations. I will say the conversation that we've had tonight, the answers that I've gotten from staff have been very helpful and, and have reassured me in a lot of ways. And, you know, as the, the Acting Mayor mentioned, this is not the final say. This is the beginning of the conversation. And so I would say, you know, to that end, I, I can support this motion tonight. I will, you know, I will echo. I will, you know, I will echo, well, first of all, to be clear, I want to join the Venn Diagram Caucus. So just want to have that on record. But I, I will say I do have some concerns about what this means for the operation of the HRA Board as well. And, and to be frank, I, you know, I mean, if, if we're saying the HRA is going to be more focused on housing, particularly housing, you know, at or around 20 and fewer units, that other responsibility has to go somewhere. I am, I am a little bit unsure of the Port Authority being, I don't know how to put this, not, I, I'm a little bit un, of, a little bit unsure of adding additional responsibility and a little additional authority, to be frank, in the Port Authority. Partly because I think the Port Authority's plate is already quite full, both in terms of responsibility and authority, partly because of the leadership transition that will be happening. And just I, that, that piece of it gives me a little bit unease. As I said, you know, it has to go somewhere. And, and I, you know, for the reasons you laid out, it certainly doesn't make sense to create an economic development, excuse me, Economic Development Authority. So those, those are just sort of general concerns I have. But I, I think, on the whole, I think this is a good direction to go. And I, I will say again, I, I think in particular, the, the explanation of the, the sort of people versus brick and mortar focus for the HRA, I think that is going to be a really, really good thing. I think having additional eyes and, and additional involvement and additional work, frankly, on, on a lot of those programs that are, are people-focused is going to be really good and really important. So I, I think some of the details, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sold on yet, but I, I think I can move forward with the conversation tonight. So thank you again for all of your work on this.
Do we have any other comments, suggestions for staff before we move on? And of course, I'm looking for somebody who would make a motion.
I'm ready to make the motion.
All right, Councilmember Loman.
Unless somebody on HRA wants to do it.
All right, Councilmember Coulter.
Pinch hitting here. Mayor, I will move to support and continue to explore the recommendations above and present these recommendations to the HRA and Port Authority Boards.
Second.
So you have a motion by Councilmember Coulter and a second by Councilmember Loman. With no further discussion on this, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, so now we are on to item 5.3, our 2022 Legislative Session Review.
Thank you, Madam Acting Mayor Carter and Councilmembers.
Good job, that was great.
Say it slowly. So, so now that the, the chances of a special session are, what I've been saying is near zero for the summer. They're never zero, but they're near zero. We thought it was appropriate to come back to the council with Katie Sen from Messer Lee and Kramer. And she will walk through in a little bit more detail what I walked through on May 23rd with the council right as the session was closing. Just detailing what happened during the session. And again, you've got the report. That was an attachment to the item that goes through in great detail everything that happened, including a focus on the Bloomington initiatives. And I will not steal Katie's thunder by telling you what's in her report. Thank you.
Good evening, council. And there's sadly not as much thunder as I was hoping to deliver tonight, as I think you all know. But I just wanted to start out by, I'm Katie Sen with Messer Lee Kramer, and I represent Bloomington at the Capitol. And I think you already know this, but you have a lot of folks on your staff and team and the mayor who are often up there doing calls, doing Zooms, doing meetings with legislators. And it makes a, makes a big difference. So thank you to all of them. And they're also called upon by a lot of our friend groups to come testify and be expert witnesses. So Bloomington really does have a great presence up at the Capitol. So I think, I know you went through some of the priorities, so I'll move quickly kind of through that. I was just going to set the stage about where session landed and what could be coming next. So as I think you all know, it was not a budget year, so the legislature did not have to pass any bills. It was typically a bonding year. There was an over nine billion dollar state surplus, and that did not include federal money. So there was, even though it was not a budget year, I think there was a lot of hope that budget bills would still pass in most areas. I think on both sides of the aisle, there was, there was interest in trying to allocate some of that funding. And so during, at the very end of session with a week to go, the leaders got an agreement on a deal, and, which is also a really good sign. I think a lot of us felt optimistic that because they had a global deal, that the chairs could work out some of the individual pieces. The global deal was to have four billion dollars in the tax bill, four billion dollars in spending, and 1.4 billion dollars in a bonding bill, as well as 150 million in cash for bonding, which would have gone to a lot of nonprofit groups in particular that had requests at the Capitol. So I think there was even more disappointment than that, that those bills didn't cross the finish line, because it felt like they were very close. I would say we were in that boat of kind of getting to see what could have passed and didn't, which in some ways was good, because I think it showed that we made a lot of progress with legislators and got a lot of support. But on the other hand, was even more disappointing. So to kind of go through some of the, the big items that we were working proactively on, obviously, the, the sales tax was something that we worked on. And we were in the House bill, the Senate bill, and we were in the final conference committee agreement that was never signed and officially sent to the floor, but all of the articles were released to the public and gone over in conference committee, and they had a press conference. And we were in that version of the bill. They took out Dwan, but everything else remained. And so that was, you know, really disappointing that that bill did not cross the finish line. On the bonding bill side, we were in the governor's bonding recommendations for the Public Health Building, which was when, you know, as you all know, the bonding process is really a year-long process. So the city had to submit requests in June, last June, a year ago. And at that point, the Public Health Facility was the top bonding priority. We knew it was going to be kind of going in tandem with the sales tax and trying to figure out where was, you know, where was the best spot for it. So we kind of pushed both, both places until the end, where we saw how things shook out. So that was initially in the governor's bonding recommendations. The House and the Senate never released a bonding bill, either side. So there were a lot of discussions at the end. I was getting calls about, you know, which of our priorities, and obviously in communication with legislators about the tax bill provisions as well, because there was some overlap there. But in the end, neither the House or the Senate put forward a bonding bill publicly. So we never really got to see what they would have done. Although I, I mean, I think there was, I think, I think our, they were thinking of our projects as being covered in the tax bill. So in the end, I think that's probably what would have happened if both bonding and tax bill had passed. Silver lining was that the HRA bill did pass. I was just joking with Erica that I should count how many bills passed, because it wasn't very many, and that was one of them. So that was exciting. And she did a great job coming and, and talking to legislators. It ended up having really complicated bill language for a very simple bill that was just increasing the membership from five to seven. She did a really good job explaining why we needed that complicated language, which has a lot to do with the fact that your HRA is 51 years old. And there weren't a lot of other HRAs at the time that yours, that the Bloomington one was created. So that was definitely a silver lining to have that bill passed. I won't go into detail on some of the other things, but we were following Metro Park funding through the Met Council. The governor had included that in his recommendations, although not at the amount we had hoped for and the other park groups had hoped for as well. There was some quarters of commerce language that Carl Keel helped analyze and weigh in on, just trying to understand how that would impact Bloomington and especially 494 and all the projects, the large project that's happening, and, and we're hoping to get additional funding for that big project. And then housing policy, that was something that a lot of the city groups really worked closely on. Nothing passed, there was a lot of, I would say, housing policy that we had concerns about that, that really limited local control. And the League of Minnesota Cities and Metro Cities and MLC also worked really hard on that issue this year. And enough, there was no housing bill that passed, so that didn't pass. So, you know, overall, I, you know, it's, it's, it doesn't feel disappointing, because I feel like on the issues we worked on, we got a lot of traction. And I think if they had passed the bills that were part of the global agreement, we would be really standing here feeling good about what passed. The other frustrating part is that there's going to be a whole new legislate, legislature next year. And about a third of the members will be new, possibly more, depending on who wins and loses elections. That's the, going to be the biggest changeover in legislators since 1970, which is kind of the year they, I think the legislature became partisan, so that's the year that is sort of the starting point. So as long as they can remember, that's going to be kind of the biggest switch of new legislators, which means we'll, we'll be starting over, to some extent, reeducating folks about our priorities. There'll be potentially new majorities, new chairs. Obviously, the governor's up for election, so it's going to be a, a big year. And, and we'll, we'll be back next year, you know, with a lot of new faces. The other things, you know, just looking for, looking ahead to this election, which you all are very familiar with, you know, redistricting is going to play a big role in the elections. There's a lot of primaries in August. I think, I think all those dynamics are playing out in the special session discussions and whether there was going to be a special session. So we had scheduled this time for now, hoping that maybe there would be a special session, and we could update this summary to tell you all of the things that passed. But about two weeks ago, the, the leaders announced that they were no longer negotiating. And I think the Senate was pretty clear that they had made their last offer of the summer. So of course, Shane mentioned, you know, you're always trying to read between the lines, like, well, does that mean in September you'll be back? But, you know, it's not off the table that after the primaries, there could be additional discussion. Although I think at this point, most people would say the chances are, are pretty low. But I think those are the main things I wanted to hit on. Anything else? I'm obviously happy to answer questions, too.
Councilmembers, any questions? All right, I am seeing none. Thank you so much.
Have a good evening.
Acting Mayor and Councilmembers, just one comment before Katie and Shane walk away. I, I again, just want to acknowledge the amount of effort that those two put in. Katie is a fantastic advocate for us, not just at the legislature, but with the administration and the various departments for the state of Minnesota. And we really appreciate the work that she does on our behalf. And as you know, Shane spends a lot of time talking to Katie. Those two are kind of like Batman and Robin for us, so appreciate the work that they do. And I'm not going to say who's whose. Because we all know.
Yes, thank you so much. Okay, so then we are moving on to item 5.4, our City Council Policy and Issue Update. And I will summarize what we heard during the listening session today before the council meeting. So we had three speakers. Mazin Gani joined us and talked a little bit about some crime issues that he has been dealing with personally at his residence in East Bloomington. Made a couple of comments around police presence and, and then some of the engagement that he's had with police and being appreciative of that. Spoke a little bit about the harassment that he's been experiencing from a group of people, again, and, and some repeating crime issues. And so he is going to be working with Chief Hodges and the Police Department to continue to work to resolve those issues. And, and seemed like there was good resolution there. We also heard from Sally Ness, who had a question related to our city code and the definition of fraud as it relates to licensing, and wanted to know how that applies to our conditional use permit. And then we also, Mr. Mueller, who spoke during public comment this evening, also had joined us, but then decided to save his comments for the agenda item tonight, item 5.2. So that is a high-level summary of our listening session. Any other, I don't think we have to take any other comments or anything. Okay. So do we have anybody who has a policy or issue update that they want to share? Councilmember Loman?
So I will, I think at this point in time, makes sense to bring forward the, the neighborhood wanted to have us, as a council, look at that Ames money as, from, from Lindale, 106th Street down, as a policy discussion, to see if it makes some sense to, you know, alter our, our, our policy. And so I'm looking to see if there's any other council members that would be willing to have a look at that before we bring that back.
So may I ask a question related to that?
Yes.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
So when I, when I, what I thought I heard Mr. Keel say was that we, if we were to consider it, we would look at it kind of as a blanket update from a policy perspective. And I wrote down, when damages are paid to that fund because a specific issue happened, should we apply that funding to that damaged area? Was that, did anybody else understand that as the central question? I just want to make sure I'm clear on the, the central question that we're, you're asking us to consider.
If, if I could, I, I like the way that you frame that, because I think that that's, so I think what this council member is trying to find out is, is this somehow different than other things that have come before us? Because of that, that very phrase there, you know, there, there was damages that were dealt. And, you know, have we had that happen in the past? You know, I haven't been around long enough to, to have that, that type of situation happen before. And is this somehow, from a policy perspective, different in just a, you know, a gap in our, our policy? Maybe the answer to that question is no. But I just want to have a deeper, deeper dive.
Yeah, Acting Mayor Carter, councilmembers, Councilmember Loman. Ask Carl to make his way up here again. I think the answer is that we do not have a specific policy. We have a past practice, right? And so that's what I wanted to, if the council wanted to have that conversation, that's what I would want to bring back forward. And, and the way that Councilmember DeLisandro framed it, I think, is part of the question that we would bring back for conversation. It's a very specific circumstance of a contribution into the, into the total funds. So Carl, did you want to expand on it any more than that?
Maybe just expand a little bit. And I think what we would agree, I think what we ought to do is put together a little memo that explores this situation, so you have a bit of more background, and we try to frame it for, for a conversation. And I think I heard the council say you'd like to have that conversation before we bring that project forward, so that we can have this, this concept resolved before we actually get into the public hearings for that project. The only other comment I would make is that our pavement management program, which we're proposing that this street would be wrapped into, assembles a whole bunch of different types of projects. And some of these projects are very expensive. Frankly, this is a very expensive project, Lindale Avenue. Others are less expensive. Some have little challenges with the neighborhood and some, some nuances that are different. And I think what we've done as a matter of practice is we've lumped them together so that we can have similar assessments for all properties. So the assessment that one pays is not directly related to exactly the cost of that street in front of their home, but rather it's, it's a balanced assessment for all the properties that are being built that given year. And we'll go into a whole bunch more in this, in the, in the memo. But that's kind of a, a background comment.
Thank you, Mr. Keel. And I think that's super helpful, to have a better understanding of that. Councilmember Nelson, and then DeLisandro.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that, and I also appreciate when you, when you look into this, if you can, because the city is still paying 75% of it. So to, to put all that money back to those homeowners also doesn't make sense. You know, it's 75% the city and everyone else in the city and the community paying for it. So I appreciate that staff clarified that earlier. The question in my mind, from how Councilmember DeLisandro laid, kind of teed this up, it was damage. How much earlier would this project be, is, how much earlier is this project being done than it would have been done under our normal PMP and checking the status of that road? And, and, you know, how much of its useful life was lost, I guess, is another consideration that I think would be.
Quite frankly, that road was very much near its end.
Okay.
When we let Ames on it.
Okay, and, and that, that does change it for me, I mean, quite a bit, because, I mean, we're maybe shifting it by a small amount of time when the assessment would have come anyways. So that, I mean, all I'm saying is maybe, don't spend a lot of time on it. A quick summary of the issues and thoughts, and I think a memo would be helpful. I don't know until reading that memo if I necessarily need to have a whole nother meeting on this. I know that'll be a shock for most of my colleagues, so.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
Thanks. Councilmember Nelson, you addressed one of my questions with your comments, so thank you for that. The only other thing that I would like to maybe know, I did some quick math, but I don't think I did it right. And so if we could get a couple of scenarios, for example, did you say it was 185,000 dollars or something roughly like that, right? You know, what does that, what does that mean when, what does that mean to the? know, what does that, what does that mean when, what does that mean to the, the average taxpayer when, when it's applied, you know, peanut buttered across all projects versus what would, what would it benefit that 63 people or 63 homes if we explicitly put there? Like, what's the delta there? I don't want to get too bent out of shape if we're talking like a hundred bucks versus if we're talking like $2,000. So I just would like to understand that, too.
We can put those actual numbers together.
Okay.
Just as a quick remark, I mean, the total program is in the range of five to six million dollars. So the 185,000 is really not a very large piece of that.
Right.
Versus the total amount that's assessed just to these properties, that would be a significant amount towards those. But it would seem unfair to put it all towards there to reduce those specific property owners' assessments. But that's, I guess we'll frame that for you.
Yeah, that'd be great. And I think the 75-25 question was another piece of that. So thank you. Thank you.
Councilwoman Loman.
So thank, thank you for that. And I think that whatever we do, I want to make sure that the public is able to, because I think that's really the, why I'm asking the question, is so that, so that those folks that are, that are in that, that neighborhood and really I think for residents across the city, they have a much better understanding of, if we don't go into a long dialogue, but I do, I do know we have other priorities for the city. I did want to just, just take, move on from that topic.
Pause just for a moment and, and put a bow on that topic, Acting Mayor. We will put together the memo. We'll share it with council. And then we'll just have a quick discussion about it and see how the council wants to proceed after having seen the memo. Okay? We won't schedule it for a long policy review. We'll just bring it up at a similar topic or point like this, and then see where you want to go. Okay?
Thank you.
So then if I could just move on to a different topic. Thank you, staff. Thank you, Carl, for that and my colleagues, too, for helping to frame those questions. So over the weekend, did have the opportunity to attend the Minnesota League of Cities because somebody was out of town. So I got to sit in for them. And I'll let my other colleagues maybe cover a little bit more of those items if they want. But I had the opportunity to attend both the Understanding Local Property Taxes, which is always fun to kind of go through that. And they really brought forward, I think, just a really good presentation on that. And one of the things I thought was interesting was that the city of, I think it was either Minneapolis or one of the surrounding suburbs had just kind of a, kind of video tutorial, kind of talking about tax capacity and that type of thing on their, on their webpage that you can kind of go through. They made that available for their residents. And so I, I know we've done other things in the past, certainly around this, but wanted to just make sure that we're doing everything we can to try to make sure folks understand property taxes, maybe assessments, you know, because these things get complicated. And when you're, when you're up here, kind of doing inside baseball, it gets easy to, to kind of remember that these things are not something that, 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 that residents typically deal with, maybe other than your wife when she sees the increase. And so I get to go home and explain that, the increase and what that looks like. So, so I just would hope that we would maybe look to, to try to find new and creative ways of, of trying to communicate that across. And then the other reason for going to the, to the, is to, to kind of acknowledge that we have finally achieved, I know this is something the, the mayor has been a, a big pusher of, unfortunately is not here today, is the Green Step Cities Program. We achieved our, our steps four and steps five. And I want to just, you know, thank both staff and, and council for their support of that and really allowing us to kind of move forward. That, that's a significant achievement in such a very short period of time. I don't think we've seen many other cities be able to accomplish that. Of course, you know, we, we saw, we saw a bunch of them getting four and five while we were there. But again, I want to just thank the, each one of you as a council and, and staff for your support of that work. It does take a village to achieve all these goals. Thank you.
Councilmember De La Sando.
Thank you, Madam Acting Mayor. Yeah, two quick things. One, just a fun thing that happened this weekend. Of course, it was Pride Weekend in the Twin Cities. And I had the honor of speaking as part of the Elected Officials contingent at the pre-parade launch conference and got to plug our pride. And nobody knew about it. So I was very happy that I got to say that in front of thousands, you know, hundreds of people. And our Minneapolis City Council President, Ms. Jenkins, I think will, will be appreciative of an invitation, which is great. So looking forward to that. Elsewise, I did want to just mention, kind of dovetailing the last two topics we had together on the HRA assessment with the Port Authority and our legislative priorities. It was, I believe that there's been an ongoing conversation with, with a resident about opening up the South Loop Development Fund. And I think we should look into whether or not we want to increase our interest in that as a legislative priority if we're going to do this expansion. And I know it's kind of on our passive list, kind of sort of maybe. But if we could think about maybe assessing that at a higher priority so that we could leverage that to expand along with the way that we're planning to expand the port. I think they have to go together if we are going to do it because of the legislative session, you know, that tees up coming January next year. So any, anybody have any major pain about that? Or should, any thoughts at all? Just throwing that out there. You're into it?
Okay.
Acting Mayor Carter and Councilmembers, Councilmember De La Sando. I, I don't believe it's accurate to say that we have it as a passive thing within our legislative platform, that we have not sought to change any of the, the guardrails or the parameters on the South Loop funding. When we bring forward our proposed platform later this year, we will make a note to have that as a discussion point.
Yeah, that, I think that would be great. I, I, they just sounded like they were connected in some odd way. And if, if we could, you know, parallel them, it might make some sense. Of, of course, if we decide not to, I get it. But I want to be sure we have a conversation. Thank you. Appreciate it. That's all I had.
Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mayor. A few quick things. Just quickly, since this is our last meeting before it happens, I'm sure everyone who's watching council meeting at 9:45 at night already knows about it. But Summer Fete is on for Sunday, July 3rd, because what better day to celebrate the Fourth of July than the Third of July? I had to miss it last year, so I'm looking forward to it this year. It's always a great time down at Normandale Lake. Hope to see you all there. Couple of other things that I wanted to bring up, though. One, in a more general way, I recently had a meeting regarding local efforts at regulating payday loans and recognizing the nature of this issue and what would be involved with it as, and, you know, the, the potential of doing something on a city level would require a significant investment in terms of resources and council time and effort, to say nothing of staff time and effort and prioritization. That being said, this is something I want to raise, is something that I, I would like to put this on the council's radar because we do have three payday lenders within the city of Bloomington. And that may not seem significant, but that is the same number as operate within the city of Minneapolis, which has roughly three and a half times as many people. And we know the numbers. And I, I normally try to choose my words carefully, but to be frank, it's a scam. These loans are operating at an average of 214% annual interest. The average loan is somewhere around $487, and the average person who takes out a payday loan takes out seven of them. So we are talking about thousands of dollars in loans and many, many thousands of dollars in interest. And so this, I mean, this is, this is just something that I wish would happen at the state level, but like so many other things has not. So I just want to put it on the radar as, as something that I hope this council will look into because I think it is, it is an issue that is, is affecting a lot of folks and, and holding a lot of folks back. So I'm just going to put that out there. The more sort of specific request that I would like to put out there as well, I saw recently that the city of Maple Grove put in place a moratorium on new rental licenses for single-family homes. And I know we've had conversations about house flipping and the residential housing market and ensuring that, that is accessible to first-time homebuyers, to folks with lower incomes and so on. And I, I, you know, understanding that, that any moratorium that goes into place has to do so for the purpose of studying an issue. And so I would like to put it out there as, as something I would be interested in pursuing so that we can study the issue more thoroughly and address some of these issues that have, have caused a lot of heartburn and a lot of problems for folks looking to move into single-family homes. So I would like to solicit council opinion on that possibility. And that's, again, that is, it would be a temporary moratorium on new, new rental licenses for single-family homes.
Councilmember De La Sando.
Just a quick comment on that. And this may be something that would be useful to everybody to see. I'm not sure if it was put out in a one weekly or not. But I know that I asked not that long ago for an assessment of rentals. And we, they put out a really pretty robust kind of assessment. You know, I think it was, the reason I was asking about it was related to, do we have, you know, large hedge funds renting, you know, buying up our properties and, and renting them out and becoming, you know, kind of absent landlords and everything. And we don't seem to have that problem here. And so I, I think it would be worth us to maybe, to maybe put that out again in one weekly to reassess that because I'm, I'm not sure why Maple Grove decided to do that. But I'm, I'm not sure we have the same problems, would be my, my thoughts there.
Thank you.
Looking at that data, yes.
Yes. And I guess I would add, too, I'd be, I worry because I know we don't have enough three and four-bedroom rentals, apartments. And so families often rely on rental housing. And I just wouldn't want to have some unintended consequences, right, of limiting those opportunities that families need, families with large, or with a lot of kids, right, or, or multiple generations living under one household. So I do have some concerns, honestly. But I think it's a good, I mean, I, I think it would be interesting to look at if we think that there is a problem. I just, yeah, I guess I do have some, some questions about it. And, and, and really, my concerns are more around unintended consequences of doing that when we just have a housing shortage for renters and homeowners. So. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I, I would be interested in looking at it. I don't know that I'd be interested in a moratorium and shutting it down based on the data I've already seen there. But maybe that changes. Because I do think it may be a growing concern. I just read today something like 12% of the homes that were bought last year in the Twin Cities were bought by investors. So, you know, maybe our community isn't as experiencing that as much as some other communities or something different. But it's obviously, something's going on there a little bit. But I don't know that we need to, you know, shut it down. That's going to have huge impacts. I'm not sure I'd defer to our city attorney, Manish I, with regards to notice requirements before a moratorium on housing, I think are in play there. So we have a, quite a bit of process, public hearing, things like that. And I just, at this point, not sure that, that we need to go that far. But I, I agree with you on the concern, Councilmember Coulter. I've raised it a few times myself. So, and full disclosure, I own a rental property in the city of Bloomington.
If I may, Acting Mayor.
Yes, Jamie.
I appreciate the reminder that staff had put out a memo on this previously. I did have a chance to talk to Councilmember Coulter about this last week. Have not pulled that memo. Will do that and recirculate it for the council to review again. I also have not had a chance yet to speak to the Maple Grove City Administrator, which I have on my to-do list as well.
I also, my understanding, because I, we had gotten an email from a gentleman who was upset about the fact that, you know, he, his belief that there were a bunch of big international, national companies buying up houses. And, and one of the points that I did have, I asked Ms. Moore to clarify is whether or not we can provide any kind of requirements around who's buying what kind of properties, and we can't. And so that's also, I mean, like, we can't, my understanding is we can't say, okay, X, Y company from Chicago, you're not allowed to buy this, but you over here, you can buy the house. So just another kind of piece of information as part of this conversation.
And, and if I may, Acting Mayor?
Councilmember De La Sando.
According to the press I just pulled up, the, the reason for that moratorium in Maple Grove seems to have been indicated by the fact that they've seen a 30% increase in rental licenses in just the past two years. So they were kind of alarmed at the spike in them. I would love to have as part of additional data what our growth rate is and if it's a much more steady thing, or if we're also seeing a, a kind of a hockey stick. That may, that may change the point of view here. But from what I could tell, we don't have that same challenge here because there's not enough houses to rent out, let alone buy in the first place. But, but I think if, if Ms. Moore or whoever is the right person could also provide us kind of like a growth chart on that, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Otherwise, I will turn it over to Jamie to see if he has comments. Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Two items for you tonight. First of all, want to share with councilmembers that we are returning to the Town Hall engagement format. So the next one will be scheduled for Tuesday, July 19th. We will be doing it at the Normandale Lake Band Shell. So it'll be outdoors and we're going to hope that the middle of July is very nice. So that'll be at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, July 19th. Still working out some of the format details with the mayor and our communications staff. But I think the likely format looks something like this. The first segment, no more than like 10 to 15 minutes, will be a rapid-fire rundown on activities or, or hot topics at the city and just provide an update to residents or attendees of what's happening and, and why these things are, are being prioritized. And then have a lengthier Q and A session in which we are going to try to solicit questions in advance. And then put them into a Tumblr or a hat or some other device that we will come up with that guarantees that every question that's submitted has a fair chance of being pulled out from the hat or the Tumblr. And then the mayor will answer, or councilmembers will figure that out, will answer as many questions as possible in allotted time. So want to make sure that we have a way for people to get their questions in and make sure that they know that their questions have every chance of being answered along with everybody else's. So still working on that. Our communications team will be getting promotion out so that folks will know about Tuesday, July 19th for Town Hall. The second item that I wanted to share is, since the mayor is not here, and he would be the better person to deliver this one, but the mayor and I were both in Paris last week with the USA Expo 2027 Bid Committee and a number of supporters and also representatives from the federal government. And the purpose of that delegation was to attend the General Assembly of the Bureau of International Expositions. This is the international body that decides which cities or countries will host expositions. The format for the meeting last week had all five of the candidate countries making presentations to the delegates of the BIE. The other four competitors are Thailand, Spain, Argentina, and Serbia. Each of the candidates had 30 minutes to make a presentation. Hopefully, you've had a chance to see that as we were able to record the live stream of the presentations and share those with the councilmembers. And we also had quite a bit of media focus on the USA Minnesota delegation that was there. So a couple of points that I want to make. First of all, again, this is not a city of Bloomington initiative. The Minnesota Expo 2027 Bid Committee is its own independent 501(c)(3) corporation or nonprofit organization. They have a president, they have a board, they're doing their own fundraising, and they are coordinating the activities around the bid. The city of Bloomington does have two ex officio board members. The mayor and the city manager are both members of the board. If the mayor, if Tim Bussie is no longer the mayor, the mayor will still have the seat. If Jamie Verbrugge is no longer the city manager, the city manager will have the seat. That's what it means to have an ex officio position on the board. The, the process moving forward is that the BIE will be looking at the formal applications from all five. We'll be doing site visits to those countries later this year. And then we'll have another General Assembly at the end of November, at which point each of the candidates will have another presentation that they will give to the delegates. The, the final decision is going to be made in June of 2023. And if the USA is selected... And if the USA is selected, the dates for the United States proposal, which would be here in the city of Bloomington, would be May 15th through August 15th. That's the, those are the parameters for the three-month event. And again, the site that was put forward by the bid committee includes adjacent lands east of Mall of America. It's a vacant 30-acre parcel currently used as parking or event space for a number of outdoor events. If people drive past there now, I think they'll see metro transit buses out there. I think they're teaching bus drivers how to drive buses, and also they were having, I think, a bus rodeo last week, too. So, and then also connecting to another parcel that's owned by the city that used to be the Ramada Hotel at 494 and 24th. So lengthy process ahead, still another year before we find out. And as we go forward, we'll continue to share information both with the council and the community about where we're at. So I wanted to make sure that we shared that with the public, and happy to answer any questions anybody has.
Any questions? Councilmember Delisandro.
Thank you, Madam Acting Mayor. Just one question for you, city manager. Is there a process between the November and June timeframe where they whittle down from five to some smaller number, or will all five go to the end?
Acting Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Delisandro, the, the only place between now and next June where there may be a whittling is as a result of those site visits. And so they, they go through a process of reviewing each of the proposals, and then the executive committee actually makes a recommendation to the General Assembly about whether a candidate should proceed to final consideration or not. What will happen in June of next year is there would be a round of voting. If five countries remain, whoever gets the least amount of votes in that first round gets knocked out, and they go back and have another round of voting to, for those four, and they keep going through that until they have, they have a country that is selected.
Any other questions? Okay. All right. So with that, I think we are done. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. So Councilmember Delisandro made the first motion, Councilmember Martin made the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, as well. And, nay? All right. Motion passes 6-0. Good grief.[1785.73]